Mayor Stix?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
And Councilmember Haney is here. He's just momentarily stepped out of the room.
Thank you, Gail, and welcome, everyone, to the September 14th, 2021 city council meeting. May, will you please lead us in the pledge, James?
Yes, thank you. Okay, please stand and face the flag and ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. And maybe approval of the agenda, motion to approve?
I would like to make one change to the agenda.
You pulled item L. We're pulling L, right?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to do two, three, and then do five, six, and save four for last. It seems to me it's going to take the most amount of time. There's a lot to listen to, a lot to look into, and just a lot that we need to hear tonight regarding the housing element update.
Would you repeat what you just said? What's the order?
So the order would be two, three, five, six, and then four.
It's moving the housing element to last because it would be the, it's going to be the longest discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Um, isn't that also the most public interest? Do we want to do that?
So as far as comments received, we've received one.
Okay, okay.
I think we've received two comments. The list shows one, but I think there was a second one. So we haven't received a whole lot of comments for item four yet.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Fine with me. All right, second for that?
Second. Go ahead. Suzie can second it.
Okay, maybe the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz? Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have a presentation tonight. We will be welcoming the Ventura County District Attorney, Eric Nasarenko, and congratulations to him on his recent election. And James, would you like to introduce him, please?
Yeah, just thank you. Just, I'll give a brief introduction. Eric was appointed unanimously by the Board of Supervisors as the District Attorney for the County of Ventura in January of this year. You may recognize his name because before that, he also served as a mayor and council member for the city of Ventura. And so with his appointment as the DA, Mr. Nasarenko and I have been talking about scheduling a presentation. And thankfully, Mr. Nasarenko was able to attend tonight. So with that, I will hand over the floor to our District Attorney, Eric Nasarenko.
Thank you very much, City Manager Vega, and it's a pleasure to be before the Ojai City Council. Nice to meet all of you virtually. Hello to Mayor Stix, Mayor Protem Wierich, the Ojai City Council, of course, City Manager Vega, and I'd also like to acknowledge the partnership and ongoing collaboration between the Office of the District Attorney and the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, specifically through your chief, Chief Rivera. I want to spend just about five, seven minutes, if I can, to talk about the victim services that are available to Ojai residents and your constituents. Specifically, we have a family justice center, which is right across from the Ventura County Medical Center. And that family justice center is a one-stop shop for victims in all of Ventura County. Specifically, victims can go to the Family Justice Center and receive counseling. They can receive referrals to therapy. They can get help with civil legal matters. They can get assistance with completing medical reimbursement forms for hospital bills and the like. They can also receive assistance with the completion of restraining orders to restrain abusers from coming within telephonic or physical contact of them. It's also a one-stop shop for a number of government and nonprofit entities. Coalition for Family Harmony, Interface, the Child Protective Service, the County Agency on Aging. And I mention this because we want this to be a resource to all of the Ojai Valley and obviously the city of Ojai. Let me give to you, if I may, just a glimpse of who in the Ojai Valley in the last two years has used the Family Justice Center. This may be of interest to you as elected officials and government leaders. So for roughly the last two years, 140 residents of the Ojai Valley have used the Family Justice Center. Predominantly, they were female, about 71%. 69% of those were identified as white or Caucasian, 24% as Latinx. The vast majority fell within the age ranges of 25 to 70. And here are the services that they sought when they went to the Family Justice Center. The vast majority, or 73%, sought some type of restraining order. 13% wanted to speak to an advocate or a counselor. 2% wanted some type of safety planning, that is, some type of shelter, housing, something away from the home wherein they had been abused. And then another 4% sought civil legal services. The vast majority of these Ojai residents had indeed spoken to a member of law enforcement. That is, they had called 911. Perhaps they had spoken through a police report to a member of law enforcement or had a field identification card filled out. In fact, 82%. What's most telling for us is just the nature of intimate partner violence and the fact that oftentimes what we see in the criminal justice system are people who are known to one another, that is, the offender and the victim. Specifically, 95% of those 140 from the Ojai Valley who went to the Family Justice Center knew the alleged perpetrator. 13% stated that the perpetrator was the spouse. 31% identified the perpetrator as someone whom they were dating. Another 33% identified the perpetrator as someone who lived in the household or was a family member. And 18% said it was somebody that was related to their family, not necessarily in the household. So I mention this because I want to make this available as a resource to all of your constituents. And we take at the Family Justice Center, Monday through Friday, walk-ins as well as appointments. Constituents and those in the Ojai Valley can text, they can call, or they can email to receive these services and get linked to a victim advocate, to a counselor, or one of the other entities. And I'd like to just take a moment and share with you that information now. It's most common in our generation for people to text, and that text is 805-947-7981. Again, in order to visit the Family Justice Center, you don't need an appointment, although it's preferable. But always feel free to call in advance, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 to 5:00. And you can call the reception line, 805-652-7655. Or, as I mentioned before, the text number, 805-947-7981. Something that's exciting and that's on the horizon that I want to share with all of you. We understand that oftentimes when somebody is at Ventura County Medical Center, they walk across the street to our Family Justice Center. They may need a restraining order, help with reimbursement of medical expenses, but they also need housing. They can't go back, obviously, to an abusive situation. So if you have been to the Family Justice Center or have kind of seen it from across the street at the hospital, you'll notice that there is a building in the back parking lot. I'm very proud to say that thanks to the Ventura County Community Foundation and the Family Justice Center, namely the Chief Deputy who oversees it, Michael Jump, we are going to be converting that building in the back of the Family Justice Center to short-term housing for domestic violence survivors. We anticipate, with the help of the Ventura County Community Foundation, 14 total beds. There will be approximately eight beds within the existing structure. And then the foundation has committed to these tiny pallet homes, which will also be in the parking area. We're going to have to redo portions of the parking lot. Obviously, this will be a secure facility that will be monitored by a security guard, given the nature of those who are staying there. But it's just an opportunity to prevent the cycle of crime from continuing, to give victims an opportunity to be someplace safe and away from the psychological, mental, and physical abuse of the perpetrator. And also, the idea here is we're going to allow them to be there from seven to 15 days. That's kind of the duration of stay. But thereafter, and during that seven to 15 days, we want to help identify supportive housing that they can transition into. So very excited about that opportunity. We anticipate breaking ground in the spring of 2022. And I just want to leave the Ojai City Council and the viewers in the Ojai Valley with Camp Hope. You may not be aware of it. I believe, just in my bones, that obviously we have a fundamental responsibility to keep the county safe, to prosecute those who violate the law, and to hold offenders accountable. But we also have an ongoing duty and responsibility to prevent crime, so we don't have additional victims in the future. And towards that end, Mike Jump, the Chief Deputy that I mentioned, and the Family Justice Center Foundation, every year send about 25 to 30 children and teenagers ages seven, 17, to the San Bernardino National Forest. And they were there last month, engaging in ropes courses, campfires, stargazing, kayaking, paddle boarding. And it was a transformative experience. These are teenagers and children who have either experienced physical or sexual abuse or they have witnessed it in their household. And the idea is to empower them with a life-changing experience. Some of them have never been out of Ventura County. But what I'm proud to mention to the Ojai City Council and the viewers is that we don't want this just to be a one-week camp. We had a student volunteer from MIT who was successful in securing grants from that university. And those grants are allowing the Family Justice Center to continue to have engagement, personal and virtual visits with the Camp Hope attendees, with the aspiration that they go on to college. That's the funding source from MIT. It's called the Pathways Program. And the notion is you give them one week of a transformative experience, but then on a monthly basis thereafter, you work with them, you engage them, you put them on a college pathway, you introduce doctors, lawyers, and other positive role models in their life, and you just go ahead and show them that there are alternatives out there and they can take advantage of them and that we're here to assist in that endeavor. So I leave you with hope, and that's Camp Hope. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak to all of you, to share with you the Family Justice Center. And please encourage those that you serve and that you lead to visit in the event that they are indeed in search of some sort of intervention and support. Thank you.
Wonderful. Beautiful. Well, I just want to say thank you so much, Eric, for the beautiful work that you're doing. And it sounds, I mean, Camp Hope and the Pathways Program sound amazing. And particularly, thank you for helping all those women, in particular, 71%, who really need help and providing housing for them. And a pathway away from violence is just incredible resource for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Stix.
Suz, say something?
I want to echo what Mayor Stix just said. Again, I assume that there's a website in English and Spanish. Would that be, if people Google "Family Justice Center", would they then have access to this information that you just shared with us?
They would. Councilwoman, there are several Family Justice Centers statewide. I believe there are 24 total. So in that Google search query, make sure you put "Family Justice Center Ventura County."
Yes.
But in terms of just reaching out, if I may, can I share with you the email address in the event anyone wants to email?
That'd be cool.
And I'm happy, City Manager Vega, to follow up with you tomorrow, just to make sure that I provided a lot of numbers and, you know, an email address, and that way you'll have it at the ready.
Yeah, that'd be great. We'll definitely pass it along.
Bill?
Such an important effort. A couple of quick questions. We've heard a lot of publicity about nationwide global trends of these kinds of problems being exasperated by the COVID experience, especially lockdowns. I was wondering if you saw any statistical evidence of that in terms of, you know, when people don't have the ability to get away, basically, they end up being more victims. And then the other point I wanted to make was, you mentioned college, Camp Hope, but, you know, I'm on the board for a scholarship committee for Rotary here in Ojai that we were very successful with, but we're definitely engaging in the more granular and diverse ways that people have life-changing career opportunities and not necessarily traditional college. And so if somebody is particularly prone to maybe something that's not traditional college, but nevertheless very equally valuable, I would hope that that, you know, that opportunity, other than traditional four-year college, would be available for them.
Yes, in the order of your questions, and thank you, Mayor Protem, we saw an exponential increase in the need for restraining orders, particularly shortly after the onset of the pandemic and during the period of lockdown. In fact, it was over 100% from year over year. And, you know, another casualty of COVID, when kids aren't in school, a teacher may not see that bruise. Or, you know, the counselor is not available to give disclosure. So, you know, the isolation, frankly, in many instances that we've seen, this is anecdotal, obviously makes it difficult for children to come forward, to report crimes, to identify their abusers. And, you know, that too is a trend that we saw during the pandemic. To your second question, and it's a valid one, I don't mean to in any way minimize vocational training. It's integral and important. But I'll share with council and Mayor Protem Wierich, you know, MIT is the funder here, and it's there.
I understand.
Yeah, you know, it's there. And part of what I didn't mention before in my remarks is the grant that this MIT student identified is specific to help minority students attend universities and colleges. So in a way, you know, we follow the funding. And I don't want in any way minimize the importance of vocational in the crafts especially. But right now, the pathway is towards universities because that's how the grant has been structured.
Right. But I just, you know, the goal should be allowing individuals to succeed. And, you know, sometimes that's more complicated than just traditional four-year. But anyway, it's all a good program. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Agreed.
Yeah. I am?
I just want to say thank you for all the wonderful work the District Office is doing. I think DA Nasarenko has done a fantastic job since he's been in, so I appreciate it. And I'm in the family court frequently enough to know how this increase has happened during COVID and all the different things that, there's been a lot going on in the courthouse District Attorney's Office on not just this issue, but a lot, trying to keep the justice and keep the wheels on the bus during this very complicated time. But this is one of those really great programs that it's nice to see the progressive nature of our District Attorney's Office, our Sheriff Department and others really trying to say, hey, there's more thoughtful, complicated, not always easy to implement, but better ways to deal with it than just the book, the law, and restraining orders. And this is part of it, especially on the victim side. That tends to be a little bit neglected overall in the justice system. Victims tend to be sometimes, you know, not the focal point of where all the attention is. So I just want to say thank you. And I hope you're bringing this to all the city's attention. But especially up here, we're a little bit more remote from the county facilities. It's really important for people to know that these services are available. And, you know, if you're in Ojai and these things happen, you have somewhere to go.
Yeah, I really appreciate the comments, Councilmember. I, hopefully by the end of this month, will have spoken to all 10 city councils in the County of Ventura. But thereafter, I intend to go to the school districts as well. Because I think, you know, when you serve as elected officials in both the educational and the municipal capacity, this is a message that you'll want to take to those that you serve. And then to your point about COVID, I'll just give you one statistic. We have managed, since the onset of the pandemic, March of 2020, to conduct about 54 jury trials. So, you know, as you know, Councilmember Blatz, you know, a lot goes into a jury trial, social distancing, mask wearing. Now, to give you sort of some perspective, in a typical year, we will have conducted more than 200. So, you know, the wheels of justice are still moving, albeit slower. I think that's necessary, given this public health crisis. But we're still continuing to bring jurors in. We're still continuing, I believe, to administer justice. And I hope there will be a day soon where we can ramp back up to what we once were and engage in jury trials in a more regular basis.
I have a quick question, Eric. And I believe the national average for sexual assault is one-third of women, one out of three. Is that true in our county also? Do you know?
Yeah, it's, but I've seen two statistics. They typically place sexual assaults of females between 25 and 33%. You're absolutely right, Mayor. I don't have at my disposal some statistic with respect to our county. But I was somewhat negligent in my initial remarks. The Family Justice Center is intended for vulnerable, sensitive victims, specifically those who are sexually assaulted, those who experience elder abuse, those children who experience some type of physical abuse, women and men who are victims of domestic violence. And then recently, thanks to our Chief Deputy and others on the Family Justice Board, we expanded the Family Justice Center to those victimized by hate crimes. I wanted to just mention that as well. You know, in an ideal world with plenty and ample funding, we'd be able to serve all victims of crime irrespective of what type of crime took place. But the Family Justice Center really has its specialization in assisting women and in assisting children.
Beautiful. Thank you. Any other questions? Randy?
I wasn't sure if you could see me. You know, the, my experience in this environment, it's the follow-up or the follow-through, which to me is the most important aspect. You're the front door, which allows the victim to enter and to be counseled and to be cared for and to be understood, and more importantly, to be heard. At the end of their 14 days, are we handing them off to another county entity that's going to see them through whatever means or needs that they have? And do you have any of those facilities or names or entities at your fingertips?
Sure. I mean, I can think of a couple offhand. You know, Rain is one of them. The city center is another. You know, if they are unhoused, Turning Point. But, you know, to your point, Councilmember Haney, it is something that is a work in progress because you need to have a plan during those seven to 15 days for where they go next. You know, one of the efforts that we undertake is family reunification. And you see it oftentimes in law enforcement, and it's a successful model. You know, not always, but in some instances, where you reach out to loved ones that have some contact and familiarity with the victim, and you basically, at the behest of the victim, say, hey, can you go ahead and house this person and assist them? They're going through an abusive relationship right now. They have a lengthy court process, and they'll need your help. So we have undertaken that endeavor. But, you know, more needs to be done in terms of where we transition them to after they get out of the short-term domestic violence housing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Eric, for coming. Really grateful to you and all the work that you do. So wonderful to meet you. Thank you.
Yeah, likewise. I look forward to meeting all of you in person soon.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you again.
Well, we're going to move, we need to take the redistricting item as the first item to satisfy state requirements for the public hearing in the Fair Map Act. So we'll move to number two.
Consent, yeah.
Well, we have to do this first, Suz.
Yeah. I'm happy to cover that one. I apologize for not catching it earlier. But we took a deep look at the Fair Maps Act, and it requires that we offer public hearings on the redistricting at a time certain. In this case, the time certain is right after the DA's presentation. So my recommendation is take that up, then go in the regular order from there. And for the next three hearings, we'll cover this by listing a precise start time for the redistricting item. For the next three hearings, likely 7:30 or so.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't catch all that. We're moving to number two because of time?
Because of what Matt just said? Did you catch that?
The underlying issue is state law requires that we offer the redistricting hearings at a precise time. And so the closest time we could get to the start of the meeting, having not listed a precise time on the agenda, is this moment. So the recommendation is to move item two up and then take the remainder in the order, previously ordered, so that would be then two, then general comment, then consent, then three, five, six, and close with four.
Okay.
Okay. So item number two, the first city council redistricting public hearing will receive input from residents regarding the communities of interest and receive the report. So this is the first of five public hearings between now and March. So we'll officially open the public hearing. And James, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, thank you. And James, Han or Gail, if you can let our redistricting partner into the meeting. I'll just give a brief introduction. There's going to be a presentation. We, a few months back, the council approved a contract with Redistricting Partners, who is also running the County of Ventura's current redistricting process and several other agencies. So we have a representative from Redistricting Partners today here to give an overview on the process and some of the upcoming steps. I believe Sophia is attending on Redistricting Partners' behalf. So I'll hand it off to her in a minute. But just to answer a couple of quick questions that people may be having watching, I know one question is probably, didn't we just do this? And the answer to that question is unfortunately, yes. We had gone through the districting process in 2018. And, but because the census data, we went through that process because of potential legal challenges. When there were challenges throughout the state challenging cities to move to districting systems, we moved into it at that point. But because the new census data comes out in 2020, we then have to redistrict following that census data. And so that census data is now out and available, and we're reviewing it. And so we are working to redistrict. So this should hopefully be the redistricting that takes place for this census cycle. And so with that, I want to hand it off to Sophia from Redistricting Partners, who will walk us through a quick presentation with the goal of holding a public hearing and receiving input from the community. So with that, Sophia, I'll hand it to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can you hear me, James?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen.
Cool.
Okay. Are you able to see um the beginning of our presentation?
Yep, perfect.
Wonderful. Um hi, everyone. My name is Sophia Garcia. I'm the GIS and Outreach Director with Redistricting Partners. And so we are the firm that will be working with you uh throughout this process. Throughout the process, you'll see myself or other colleagues of mine. Um and as uh James mentioned, the the Fair Maps Act, otherwise known as AB eight four nine, is a bill that uh cities and counties across the state have to follow. So we're going to get into that a little bit throughout the presentation, but he's correct. And as a part of that law, the redistricting conversation has to be at a time certain slot on your agenda. And that allows for the public uh to be able to call in at a specific time and give their input. So we're going to get started. So this is the.
I'm sorry, is this when the Spanish interpreter was going to participate, or am I confused?
So they are available if if anybody requests an interpreter. Interpreter, at this point, we have not received any request.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Sorry.
No, no worries. Yeah. Okay, um so this is the Redistricting One-on-One presentation, and we have to start with uh what is redistricting? And uh so redistricting is the process of adjusting district lines every ten years after the release of the US Census. As James said, uh the census was um just released. The numbers were just released actually a couple of weeks ago. And if it was a normal census year, we would have gotten that data at the end of March. But because, you know, this is not a normal couple of years and really not a normal census year, we just got that data a few weeks ago. And so we're in a really compressed timeline uh for the state. Across the country, a lot of cities and counties, you know, have a very compressed uh timeline. Uh so normally, yes, it does occur every ten years. Some of the well-known examples that the public may be aware of are congressional and state legislative. And in California, we have a redistricting, citizen redistricting commission that is uh in charge of drawing and finalizing our congressional and legislative lines. Uh within the US, redistricting has become an extremely politicized process and has been the subject of more high-profile Supreme Court decisions than any part of our election system. Uh as James mentioned as well, in California, we have the California Voting Rights Act, which has an opportunity for uh members of the public to ask their jurisdiction to move from an at-large to a districted system, which sounds that you all did that a couple of years ago. So we do have uh it's been in the public conscious a lot the past couple of years, this process of districting and now redistricting. So the city of Ojai redistricting, some of the structure for the city, the redistricting is completed by the city council. Uh you all here with us this evening. And the Fair Maps Act, um again, also known as AB eight four nine, requires at least four public hearings uh for outreach to the community and that all information be made public and available online. So all of the redistricting information, presentations, content, any maps that have been submitted by the public, um any of the community of interest testimony will be online um at the city of Ojai redistricting website. And that website will actually be maintained by the city for ten years. So uh you can kind of wave and say hi to your redistricting folks that will be doing this in a decade uh because the city will have to maintain all that information. Uh some other things that the the city will be doing, and we'll be working with staff and the council, is the process will include uh community outreach hearings. Again, a part of that uh for um hearing structure. There'll be multiple ways for the public to submit community of interest input, and we'll go through a couple of those this evening. And multiple draft maps um will be submitted for the opportunity with for the public to comment. So there is a requirement for the final map that's going to be adopted, that that be uh placed in the public seven days prior. So we're going to work with staff to try to um get as many of those maps that you guys will be discussing ahead of time so that the public will have an opportunity to review them. And when you're in um these public meetings, hopefully you'll have a robust discussion and comments from members of the public. So some traditional redistricting principles that are going to help guide the process and will also be in ranked criteria order for this, the council to consider. Okay, um yeah, I have my dogs in another room. Yes, if you hear if you hear barking on my part, we've got three dogs in the house.
We're used to it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's a benefit if I'm working from home, but also they can come unexpected on call. But these uh traditional redistricting principles principles are also here to help prevent a districting from becoming a gerrymander. There are a number of criterias that have been used nationally and upheld upheld by the courts. Again, these are in ranked criteria order. So the council, you know, has federal law to consider, state law, the new Fair Maps Act, and then these guiding principles as you guys are looking at draft maps and then finalizing a plan. So the first one is relatively equal size. And when we're talking about um the free districting, the the city council districts, they're to try to make them as relatively equal size as possible. And when we're talking about size, we're talking about people, not citizens. Again, for this, we are using census data and for the census data um that captured total population of people. There is some room uh of a, you can have a total deviation of ten percent between the highest and the lowest populated districts. So that is allowable so that you're able to consider all the other criterias when you're looking at your draft maps and finalizing a plan. Contiguous or contiguity is one of those terms that kind of only come around once a decade. And that's the concept that your district shouldn't hop or jump over an area. So if you can kind of think of a board of a game of checkers or the game of Twister, you don't want to hop over an area or kind of hobbit in multiple corners of uh your district. Maintaining communities of interest is is a guiding principle that has really been highlighted throughout this process in twenty twenty-one. And we're going to get more into that in the later slides. I mean, it's also uh the third ranked criteria in the Fair Maps Act. And the Fair Maps Act um also has a lot of opportunity that kind of uplifts the communities of availability to make comment and opportunity to do that. And so maintaining communities of interest is one of those things that if the council hears a lot of testimony or wants to maintain an area together, that's again why you have that ten percent deviation uh room to play with. You can also follow existing neighborhood lines. Um it's not something that the council wants to consider or other kind of government lines that they'd like to see to help them guide that process every districting. And then keep districts compact. And when we're talking about compactness, that can be in two forms. One's in appearance and in function. So kind of thinking how functionally people move through the city of Ojai. Um and again, if just because a district, it looks like a funny shape, doesn't necessarily mean that it is a gerrymander. Um this is too why compactness is lower ranked on this list, because you have all these other criterias to look at. In California, the definition of compactness is to not bypass nearby population for faraway population. So if there's an area that is kind of close to the district that you're looking to construct and you want to go and bypass it to grab a portion of another district, um that's not really allowable now under state laws. But that is kind of helps and gives us a definition for compactness. So these are the guiding uh redistricting principles that we're going to follow and we're going to work with and the criteria that the council will have to look to when drawing their maps. So a lot of this presentation now is focused on the concept of communities of interest. And communities of interest is also a term that kind of only comes up once a decade. But what it really means is understanding that in this redistricting process, we know that residents of the city of Ojai are experts of their community. You on the council know your community very well. Um and so it's kind of taking, knowing your community, how you move through your community, how you interact with the council, but putting in it redistricting terms. So communities of interest uh for the purpose of redistricting is about bringing like-minded people together for representation. A community of interest can include ethnic and language minorities and other groups. Some groups that are covered under the Voting Rights Act are Latinos, Asians, and African Americans. However, while race is a community of interest, it cannot be a predominant factor in drawing districts. Um unless there is um a Voting Rights Act district and legal counsel will will guide us through that process. Again, while we understand that race is a community of interest, a lot of us uh recognize our race and kind of think of that as a big part of who we are. In the redistricting process, if there's not a Voting Rights Act district, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing districts. So we have some guiding questions to help members of the public think through when they're giving public testimony uh to not just think about their race, but kind of think of the other common bonds that bind their communities together. Um so the three kind of things to think through in terms of giving your community of interest testimony and sort of thinking through that um the city council will be looking for this when they're judging the uh the kind of testimony that's written, that's verbal, that's given through maps, um that's given through paper maps. They're kind of, again, think about the community in terms of the redistricting process. And so one thing to think through is what is the shared culture characteristic or bond of your community? Kind of what are the reasons why you think of your community together? Once you've thought of that, um because redistricting is about mapping, it is about geography. At the end of the day, there will be a council district plan for the city of Ojai. Um asking yourself, what is the geography of your community? Um of course, if you're going to give us a map, whether that's an online map or a paper map, we'll be able to see that geography. But if you're giving written or verbal testimony, it's really helpful to think through the street boundaries of your neighborhood or community, if there's specific locations that you think are really important, and to vocalize that or write back. Uh because I uh at Redistricting Partners, we don't want to uh misinterpret what a member of the public is saying. So again, it's really helpful if you give us that geographic information. And then third, to think through what is the relationship to the agency? So in this instance, what is the community's relationship to the city council um of the city of Ojai? So are there things that you would feel you'd be better represented if your specific community was kept together? Or if right now your community is split, if that's causing um you to put more work in to talk to your representative? This is kind of the kind of format or guideline to think about your community in terms of the redistricting process. So again, kind of thinking about that in another way, I'm putting it in the form of three questions. Uh does the community have a shared culture characteristic or bond? Is the community geographic in nature? Can it be mapped? And again, how would you describe your community's relationship to the jurisdiction and how is it is affected by policy decisions made by elected officials? Again, these sort of thought questions are here to help guide the residents and community as they're giving their testimony. Some examples about of communities of interest, it can include a really vast variety of things. Uh communities of interest, um they're subjective, and we're talking about people's relationship to the city, a place that they know very well. And so we want uh members of the public and the council to remain open-ended and uh kind of just listen to what the residents are going to say. And some examples could be people living near industry, so like farming, agriculture. Uh there could be senior citizens or students. You have a downtown area versus a rural area, um urban or agriculture, or homeowners or renters. So there, that's just some examples of what some communities of interest can be. In the uh under the Fair Maps Act and in this redistricting cycle, uh there are also some things that are not allowable to be considered as communities of interest. Again, this presentation and the Fair Maps Act and the criteria are all here to help prevent a district from becoming a gerrymander. And so under the Fair Maps Act, um there's three things that are explicitly prohibited from being considered as a community of interest. Those are political party affiliation, incumbency, and political candidates. We know that members of the public uh will come forward and give testimony, and it is uh people's right to speak to their folks who represent them, their elected officials. But it's the uh job of the council to sift through that community of interest testimony and sort of see what they're allowed to use, what you guys are allowed to use to consider when drafting maps and finalizing a plan. So again, the three things that are not allowable to be considered as community of interest are political party affiliation, incumbency, or political candidates. Another thing for members of the public to kind of think about when they're giving their testimony, it is really hard to um map or consider groups of similarly minded people who do not share a geographic location. So if there is a community of interest that says my community of interest is the whole city of Ojai, um that's really difficult, again, because we're talking about redistricting process, or we're talking about, you know, splitting up the city. And so we encourage those people who come with that um testimony to think about if there's a a portion of the city that is um sort of you have pockets or concentration, or if there's hotspots, or think of kind of think through beyond the city, what if there's specific areas or neighborhoods um that you consider as a community of interest. Um so those are just another thing to think through, again, because we're talking about um districting. Additional redistricting rules, again, under the Fair Maps Act. Um again, not to consider incumbency or candidates, to not draw districts to advantage or disadvantage political party, to hold a minimum set number of hearings to encourage public engagement. And um as mentioned earlier, posting of all redistricting commission information on the website that is maintained for the next ten years. Uh so this was a law um that was passed in twenty nineteen, and a lot of um advocates, community advocates across the country um advocated for for this law to be passed and the process to make the process more transparent and to make it to where more folks can have the opportunity to speak to their representatives. So these are some of the additional criteria that will be followed um for the city and counties across the state. Uh more additional redistricting rules are, the Fair Maps Act also requires cities and counties to use a revised dataset for population. That is, the statewide database is tasked with reallocating state prison population to their residency prior to incarceration. And we expect that that final dataset will be available at the end um of September. So we have the uh final twenty twenty census data, but to the city will have to then use um the statewide database data that moves our incarcerated population from state prisons and puts them at their last known residency. And so um in some cities and counties, that's not going to have a lot of movement, but we may have uh, you know, a couple or a hundred like additional residents that will be a part of the final dataset for the city of Ojai. So that is again another um additional thing that the city will have to consider. So there's quite a few ways for the communities to submit testimony. Again, you're welcome to attend one of these meetings. There's uh multiple points throughout this agenda I see for the opportunity to give comment. Another way is to submit the community of interest worksheet uh which should be on the website um on the city of Ojai redistricting website. We're also in the process of of finalizing having um Districter as part of the, another way that the city can submit testimony. I think we're hoping to get that at the end of the week, if not early next week. And this is a online mapping tool that is widely used by jurisdictions across the state and even across the country. And um twenty eleven, online mapping tools weren't really something that were widely available. And actually, at Redistricting Partners, we love going in person. We love doing community workshops and having paper maps and and talking with residents. But in the kind of environment that we're in with um COVID and the Delta variant and a lot of meetings being hybrid, this is a really wonderful option. And we've seen it's very user-friendly, intuitive. And as soon as it's up, we see a lot of residents from other jurisdictions using it right away. So that is a a really exciting tool, and we're really happy that um this city will make that one. Again, just as a reminder, uh this is, I think, we have this up, these questions up a lot because we know that the redistricting process, you know, only happens um once every ten years. Uh so we're going to, you know, work to hard to try to make sure that you, you know, your city doesn't have to redistrict again for another ten years. And so these kind of questions are there to sort of help folks try to be a part of the process and give testimony that the city can use. Uh this is the redistricting website. Um so it's ojai.ca.gov slash redistricting um dash. And so you have a lot of information. You see the Fair Maps Act prominent there. Um background information and information on upcoming meetings. Uh so that is a really great resource. Uh, so that is a really great resource to look at. And that is the, the presentation. Yes, I, I will stop sharing my screen. And then I see, um, Susan's hand is up. Stop sharing.
And if I could hop in with, uh, two final comments before questions from council. Mayor.
Sure, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things that I think, um, Ms. Garcia covered really well, but I want to emphasize is the Fair Maps Act has changed the game regarding how maps have to be drawn since the current maps were drawn in 2018. So, um, it, it, the, the reality is we're look, we're going to be looking at maps that may be similar, but will not be the same as the current four maps or four districts, one map, four districts. So I want folks to sort of have that in mind, the community members, the public, um, those on council. Bear that in mind, the Fair Maps Act as laid out by Ms. Garcia has really changed the, changed the situation. And we're going to see maps that are going to look a little bit different. Um, or of, or significantly different as the council may decide. The second big thing to bear in mind is that in order to show without question that we are not considering incumbency, the redistricting partners team has not been told and will not be told where the council members live. They do not have that information, therefore they cannot consider that information as they're drawing the maps. Uh, so that's also how we're going to protect the process to show, should anyone come along to challenge it, that we haven't considered incumbency and have met the Fair Map Act requirements. Uh, but everything else is fair game. And so with, with that, I think we're available for any questions from council and the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Susan?
Well, you just add, you did, um, answer my first two questions because the, the current map is based on where the incumbents lived. Am I correct?
The current map took into account is part of many factors where the incumbents lived at the time. And that was lawful because before we were allowed to consider incumbency as one of several factors as part of maintaining continuity of government. Now we can't.
So, okay, so the burning question is what happens to the incumbents? And then my other question is, uh, will, uh, Ms. Garcia or Sophia, if we can call you that? Will you be with us for the next five meetings?
I'll let her answer that one first and then I'll cover the second.
Well, just to clarify that, so it's not the next five meetings, but we do have five public hearings scheduled over the next six months.
That's what I meant. Yeah. And so it will be the same person, will you be with us through the whole process or will there be? Is there always going to be a mapping representative or whatever the title is?
Yes. Yeah. So it'll be either myself or a member of the redistricting partners team, but we will be monitoring and or presenting, um, at all of the, uh, the city meetings, or if you have outreach hearings, we'll be monitoring those as well. Um, as part of our process, when we, uh, draft maps for you will be to consider the community of interest testimony. And so we'll be monitoring, listening, um, to that, um, at all of the meetings. Yes.
So, so you, so you're aware that we're a 4.4 mile city? And a lot of the things that I, that you covered, I could be wrong, don't really apply. You know, because we're so, we're so small. And so my, my question is, um, a couple of the council members are renters. And I, my house was just sold. And as it stands now, I have to move, I can only move into a very small area known as District Four. And so all of this that's taking place is, is this for the 2022 election? Like, will the current council members, I'm the only council member that has run at, that has, um, in the last election had to run in a very small pool of people, like was it 700 people, District Four, a very small pool. Are you following what I'm saying? So in, there's another election in 2022. Will that impact if the incumbents decide to run? How does that work? It, it, are they going to be moved out of their current district for this next election? Or how does that all work? Is that, is that a clear, clear what I'm asking?
Yes, yeah. That's a, that's a question we, uh, we get pretty, like, almost at every meeting.
Yeah.
So, uh, as Matt mentioned, we won't be considering incumbency when we're drawing maps. But at the end of the process, when you all finalize a plan, uh, we will then, uh, you will all kind of, um, decide if there is one or more incumbents who are in the same district. Then you'll decide, uh, kind of who will, what the order of the, the next like election will be. And I'll just start off with saying that during this process, if there are multiple incumbents in a district, you won't be, um, you won't shorten your term. So if there is.
And no one's term is likely to be extended either. It, it's going to be the same. So what will happen is the districts that come out of the process will have, um, uh, Councilmember Francina, you're in office through, um, elected 2020, you're in office through 2024. Your term will not be shortened. It cannot be shortened. The other three members of council, you're elected 18 through 22, you're up for reelection next year if you choose to run again. Those terms will be four-year terms. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Ms. Garcia. Wanted to make that point real plain.
Yeah, uh, no, yeah, thank you. So if there is, so then once you um, are in the districts, if you're, when your term is up and you're still in a district with an incumbent, then you will have to run against one another, but only until your, your term is expired. If that makes sense.
And the likely outcome, if I could add a little more here, the likely outcome, given the fact that we have, uh, Councilmember Francina is in District Four, which is roughly south of the avenue with a little bit to the north. And then the other three districts are split, one, two, three, sort of, uh, west to east north of the avenue with the pinwheel in the middle around downtown. Um, we may end up with pairings. Um, and if the pairing, however the pairing ends up, everyone on council right now keeps their seats. What will control is next time. If we end up with a situation where a pair is off cycle, then council, then that's when we'll sort out the precise order. So if, for example, um, count District Four and current District Three and, or Two end up together. Uh, those two councilmembers end up together, that's Bill and Francina. If you end up in the same pair, then Francina stays on council. Bill has to run, would have to run again in 22. Um, and then, uh, Susan stays on council representing the district, probably Four, and then Bill has to run again. But, so no one leaves office. What we have to sort out though is the precise order for if two people are paired, that means one district doesn't have anyone elected from it. And that's what would then likely take the next seat that's up would be that seat. Uh, the district that doesn't have anyone living in it, that's the one that would run. So let's say in this example, and this is hypothetical example, but it's illustrative of the rule. If, uh, Susan and Bill end up paired and the lines are drawn such that no one lives in the remainder of District Four. Then, uh, Susan keeps her seat through 24 and 2024. And Bill's seat would then become the District Four seat that would then be up next time. It's all a bit hypothetical at this point, but no, the key things to bear in mind, no one loses office early. Everyone remains in office. And everyone's, um, no seat, no terms are extended or shortened. Everyone's terms are exactly as they are now, um, on the current cycles. And the other thing to bear in mind right now is noted, Councilmember Francina in District Four was elected from a district um, and must continue to be within the district with a 30-day buffer. Uh, the other three were elected at large, the last legacy seats. Uh, so right now those three members can live anywhere in the city. But come the 2022 election, will be running from districts and will have to live in the districts as the mapping may shake out.
So may I say something else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Currently, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, all five council members, including the mayor, live of west of Ojai Avenue. Am I, wait, they live on, on, north, north, north of Ojai Avenue.
I believe that is currently correct. Yes.
Yes. And, and three of us live within a block of each other. I foresee.
That is correct.
An interesting outcome to all of this.
And that's why I really let off with the warning, the maps will look different than they did now. And we are likely to end up with some paired districts. Paired meaning two members of council living in the same district. That's given the fact that three members of council live in a block of each other and that block is a census block. Um, we're likely to end up with, um, some pairing. So we want to set the tone there and set the expectation. Um, and you know, it's not the first time this has happened in cities, the history of California redistricting. Um, it's, for lack of a better phrase, it is what it is. Um, folks should be aware of it. And, um, in order to be mindful of this possibility and the, the, uh, obvious implications thereof, that is in part why we, we've walled off redistricting partners from knowing this. They know the general information, but they don't know the details. And we're not going to give them the details. In particular, they're not going to be told where each council member lives. That way, they can't have, bear that in mind as they drew the maps.
Interesting. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Randy?
So I just, um, you know, based on all the, uh, comments that I receive. We, uh, we, at one time were five council members at large with a rotational mayor position. Um, so if that was still in place, we'd be, we'd have five council districts, not four.
Yes.
When we went to the elected mayor, that, that position now is at large. And we have four council districts. Would it, would it be beneficial at this time? And when I say beneficial, it's cost effective. Would we, while we're doing this, want to look at five districts versus four? In the event that we revert back from the elected mayor position to all five being at large. Um, I just, I, I'm looking at, at just cost and the fact that if the citizens and the council wanted to do that, um, what would, you know, I'm looking at the cost of having to actually go through a redistricting mechanism. Then versus if we're doing it now, um, does it affect us if we create five and still keep the mayor's seat at large? Um, knowing that if we ever did revert back, that we have the five districts already laid out. Is that illogical, logical, or not worth talking about?
A couple of, of responses. Uh, as noted, of course, returning to an appointed mayor is a decision only the voters can make. Um, and that would have to be vote of the people. Um, on the underlying question, the city could draw both sets of maps, four and five now. But it would not relieve us from the obligation, should the voters choose to return to a, uh, five council member slot. I believe we would still need to go through the hearing process then. Although the map would already exist, so theoretically the council could readopt it with further public comment. Uh, it may save some money, but I don't believe it eliminates the second round of hearings. I believe that would still be required because redistricting has to be done every 10 years upon the census. And when the number of districts change, changes, as would be the case if we were switched from four to five. But of course, if the map, a set of five already existed, it would put us ahead of the game, but it doesn't eliminate it entirely because of that, uh, element of state law.
It would, it would only expedite it, um, because you wouldn't have to go through the numbers, uh, game again.
Right. Then the, the, a draft set of maps would exist, but we would still need to go through the hearing process.
Hold public hearings and you would still have to do the, the same process that we're in, that we're going to do right now. It, it's just that we wouldn't have to be go, we wouldn't have to be going through, um, the actual uh, zones or the actual district allocations because we have them.
Right. Although we would have to still take the comment.
Right.
Um, I would suggest that, that council, uh, uh, obviously up to council majority, no maps are being drawn tonight. So if there's interest in looking at drawing five maps, uh, we could add that as an, if there's a second, we could add that as a, as a component of the agenda item for the next redistricting item to get council direction on whether, when we graduate to drawing graph maps, we draw four or five. Um, but I wouldn't, we couldn't make a decision or council, not me, council could not make a decision on that tonight. Uh, it would have to be added to that next item.
And just to clarify, Matt, on Randy's question, um, if the public decided they wanted to go back to the rotating mayor, that's still, that would have to be on the ballot in 2022. And we'd still need one more mayor, one more two-year elected mayor in order to change. So that would be 2024, correct?
Correct. With one caveat, the question of returning to a appointed mayor can also be on a special election if the council so chose. If the council did that, then it would be possible to have that resolved before the November 2022 election. Uh, although I will note, the last two times this subject was on the ballot, it was on a regular election ballot. Uh, first in 14 and then again in 18. Uh, in word on the regular ballot in 22, then yes, it would not take effect until 24.
And 18, in 2018, the public decided not to keep it elected, keep the mayor elected.
That is correct. In, uh, 2014, the public created the elected mayor position, took effect in 2016. And then in 2018, the public was asked to reconsider the question and decided to keep the elected mayor, uh, by a pretty resounding vote, if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Bill?
Yes, uh, I think probably a question for Mr. Summers. Um, we all know that about the Santa Monica decision in the appeals court that the, uh, Supreme Court said was not going to be part of case law, but then they've decided, I'm being a little cynical here, decided to basically by inaction, not make a decision. I mean, I, I watched the posting, it says, nothing seems to happen except more and more amicus briefs in the case for months and months and months. Uh, is it your anticipation? Well, it's a twofold question. Any update on if the Supreme Court wants to, I'm, I'm being cynical again, accept some responsibility and make a decision? Or two, what happens if the Supreme Court comes down with a decision in the middle of this redistricting process? That is favorable for small cities in terms of the Santa Monica decision?
Um, so as, as we all know, I have no crystal ball. Um, but I think realistically, the Supreme Court is very aware of the timing and is probably not going to give us a decision in time to avoid this process, the same process.
In other words, continue the, they continue the, don't make a decision.
Right. They have the right to make a decision on their own timeline. There are no, there are no time limits of the state Supreme Court in the window we're in, uh, during the briefing process. But before they've held, held argument. The deadline for the Supreme Court, like all courts in California, is once they've heard argument and submitted the matter, they have 90 days to issue their decision. The court is very good at not hearing argument until they're ready for a decision.
Right.
Um, so they theoretically can sit on it forever. I don't think they'll take forever. I do think we're not going to get a ruling until after folks have completed this process, which I realize is extremely inefficient. Um, and disruptive, but I, that's my best assessment of what the court's likely to do. Um, if a ruling comes down, well, that's favorable, that allows the city to credibly drop districts, then we would obviously take that to council and take a look at it. Uh, but I don't think we're going to have that in the process. Our deadline to completely redistricting is April of next year. I don't think we're going to have a ruling from the court in the next seven months that allows us to do so.
Yeah, I just wanted to repeat for everyone's, you know, knowledge to remind everyone. The finding of the appeals court was that the group supposedly benefiting by the law were not benefiting by the new law. Uh, to, you know, summarize. And that's the issue that the Supreme Court doesn't seem to want to take up is, you know, that appeals court poor finding. So, in other words, there's a, a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matthew, but that was the key point, that you, uh, this was supposed to enhance underrepresented rights. And it wasn't doing that in a small city environment.
Right. To summarize a 80-page decision, the Court of Appeal found that Santa Monica's switch to district-based elections did not actually improve representation of the Latinx community and thereby did not need to be forced. They did not hold that the federal standard, which requires the ability to create a majority minority district, is the California standard. Instead, they had a nebulous 20-page standard that sort of boiled down to, is it beneficial to the group at issue or not? Um, and the Supreme Court has noted is taking up the case, but hasn't yet issued its ruling. Uh, and I don't expect to have a ruling anytime soon. Although, like I said, I don't have a crystal ball, so they, we may see one tomorrow. We're monitoring the case quite closely. If a ruling comes down that's in any way beneficial to the city, we will immediately have it on the next available meeting or a have it on the next available meeting or a special meeting to evaluate how to deal with it as a council. In the meantime, until we have a clear, until, and really, if we get a very clear umbrella of protection, our recommendation is to stay the course and complete the redistricting process.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Sophia. Much appreciated, and we will see you again.
And before Sophia departs, did we have anyone who wished to speak in the public? So far, it's been...
I was going to ask, yeah. Any other questions? We'll move to public comment.
We have no people signed up to speak on Zoom.
Great. All right, we'll close the public comment.
Do you want to note something? Because I, I think I heard folks kind of mentioning when maps would come out. Under the Fair Maps Act, there will be two hearings that are just pre-maps, so available to listen to the public, and then the, the third hearing is when we can discuss drafts maps. So the, the next city hearing will be another kind of opportunity to hear a testimony, and then on the third one, we can submit maps and have that discussion. So just wanted to note that for you all as well.
Well, thank you very much. Lovely to meet you and look forward to seeing you again.
Yes, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. We will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to commission reports. Any commission reports today, James?
I did not have anybody signed up. One commissioner's signed up to speak on one of the council, or one of the agenda items, but I didn't have anybody signed up for commissioner reports.
Thank you. We'll move on to public communication, please. Whenever you're ready, Gail. Thank you.
The first person we have is Charles Baker. Charles, I'm going to, whoops, I'm sorry, I clicked the wrong button. Charles, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and talk. Charles Baker, are you there?
Looks like he just raised his hand.
Yeah, let me see.
And just typed in, yes. So, Mr. Baker, it sounds like you can hear us, but you're on, we can see that you're muted on your end.
Yeah, if you can unmute yourself, Mr. Baker, and we can, you can go ahead and speak.
For one, one second, it said audio connected, and then it muted again, so. Can you hear us? It looks like you're connecting now.
Yeah. Looks like you're connected. Are you there?
Again.
And now he's muted again. Mr. Baker, I'm going to come back to you, and I'll go to our next speaker. The next person is Christine Golden. And Christine, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and talk.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, council members and staff, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the donation of the two benches and a sculpture at Clovis Park.
It's on the consent calendar.
Hello?
Yeah, we have to wait.
Yeah, Christine, it's on the consent calendar, that item? So can we wait till we get there?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure. You want to wait on, you'll come back to me?
We will get back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Betsy. I appreciate it.
Any other general comments?
I'm trying to make my screen behave one moment. I'm going to put myself on mute so I can ask our James Hahn a technical question. One moment.
Where's the view options?
Okay. I apologize for that. The next person is Ron Solorsino. Ron, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and talk.
All right. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
All righty. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsino, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I just wanted to share with you a few exciting events that are coming up at the library in the month of October. So this year, the Ventura County Library is proud to announce its fourth annual One County, One Book Community Reading Program. One County, One Book aims to unite the Ventura County community around a common narrative, spreading interest in and facilitating discussions about the selected book. This year's One County, One Book selection is "Your House Will Pay" by Steph Chah. From the official description, "Your House Will Pay" is a powerful and top novel about racial tensions in LA, following two families, one Korean-American, one African-American, grappling with the effects of a decades-old crime. One County, One Book 2021 is presented by the Ventura County Library with the generous support of the Ventura County Library Foundation. Other program partners include California Lutheran University, the Museum of Ventura County, and the Ojai Valley Library Friends and Foundation. All members of the public are invited to join Steph Chah for a virtual author talk and Q and A, which will take place via Zoom. Additional details about this talk, including how to register, will be posted on our website. In the meantime, you can save the date for this event, which will take place at 2:00 PM on Saturday, October 30th. One County, One Book programs also include an in-person and livestreamed faculty panel discussion on October 6th, which is organized by Cal Lutheran University, and a virtual book discussion on October 20th facilitated by Ventura County Library staff. More information on these programs and links for registration can be found on our website Finally, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Ojai Library is open to the public for our normal hours of operation, which are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Friday through Sunday, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. You can visit our website for the latest updates on library programs and events, and follow us on Facebook and Twitter for information on virtual storytimes, reading contests, take-home activity kits, and more. And I just want to add real quickly that we do also have at the library, and in fact, all of our library locations, information on this redistricting initiative, ways for people to submit feedback, some forms and some maps and things like that. So members of the public who are interested can drop by the library for more on that. And thank you so much for your time, and please contact me if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and that book sounds great. Can't wait to read it. All right, any more public comments, Gail?
We have, those, we have no one else who signed up to speak, has actually logged in, but I'm going to, going to try Mr. Baker again. Charles Baker, if you're there, if you can, oh, you seem to be unmuted. If you can go ahead and, you can go ahead and speak, anytime.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Finally. It must have, it could have been a technical issue on my side. I'm sorry. Okay, so my wife and I are in District Four, and we live over in the Ojai Craftsman Village, which is kind of down by Bryant Circle and the Tennis Academy and all that. It's the newer live workspaces. We've had our business here for almost two years in November. And the reason I'm, you know, here talking tonight is because the homeless situation right here on this little, on this street, which is, you know, pretty much the corner of Fulton and Pearl, just down from it, right here in the space between the Craftsman Village and the Tennis Academy, has been, has been for the last two years that we've been here, just, you know, I don't understand how it can be let to go on like it is. We've had to call the police multiple times, and over the periods of times we've done it, the police have always said, well, you're going to have to talk to the Ojai City because these, you know, that's the only way to get them from not being able to stay back here and park and live like they do. And so now the police really don't even respond. And just over the weekend, I walked outside at 6:00 in the morning, and I've got these guys out there just puking their guts out, hanging out of their vehicles. It's trashy over there. You can't even, don't even want to walk down the street. You know, we've witnessed, you know, abuse of their animals. There's one set of people that's lived here for the two years that we've lived here, which, and, and a lot of others just come and go. They seem to all kind of commute together and have their little parties. And I called the police, and I said, this guy's over here throwing up. He's very obnoxious. Maybe he needs help. Maybe you need to send someone to help this man. And they pulled up. The police wasn't there 30 seconds and, you know, and, and left. And then the people started laughing, and then the police called me and said, hey, there's no problem with them. We can't do anything about it. Bye. And within two minutes of the police leaving, I go back outside, and here's that same person now standing, hanging out of his car, vomiting all over the street. He's hanging on to a tree. I've got some of this on video. But those are the kind of things that we put up with back here, and I'm just curious as to why we can't get something like that taken care of, why it's allowed to like exist in this part of Ojai. I, I know there's homeless people all around town, and I know they're all over California and, and other cities and other scenarios, but this is like a community back here for these guys. And I just don't understand why they're, yeah, and you know, like I've got people, we even had people coming up into our water spigot, taking a bath, you know? I mean, it's just, it's just crazy. I just don't understand why it's allowed to be a commune back here. And it still goes back to the police telling me the same thing over and over. You have to talk to the Ojai City, you have to talk to Ojai City. They'll need to put maybe a no parking thing overnight, because all they technically have to do is move their car six inches. Within like, I don't remember what the police officer said, if it was 48 or 72 hours, but I see I'm running out of time, and so that's my complaint in District Four. And I would just be happy to bring that to your attention, and I hope that something can be looked into and done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. James, could we look into this?
Yeah, Mr. Baker, we'll have somebody from my office. We'll be contacting you in the next few days, and we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
A quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Summers, I, I assume the restraints on dealing with homeless don't include the ability to enforce trespass on private property. Is that not the case, or?
Yes, trespass on private property remains a viable option. Absolutely. The restrictions that are in place under a ruling by the Ninth Circuit relate to enforcement of anti-camping ordinances generally on public property, public streets, rights of way. But we're still allowed to enforce in particular times and places, and we've provided information on that opportunity to the Sheriff's Department. So clearly, we need to connect through the city manager's office with the Sheriff's Department and Mr. Baker to understand where the disconnect is and how we can take a look at improving the situation.
And, and the restrictions on enforcing anti-camping rules, it, it doesn't prevent us from enforcing basic rules of civil conduct, does it?
Yes. The, the rest of the, the prohibition is essentially, we can't arrest someone when all they're doing is sleeping or existing in the right-of-way on that alone. The rest of the penal code remains viable. So drinking in public, drugs in public, possession of unlawful substances, consumption of unlawful substances, those remain viable options. So too trespass, of course, if they come onto private property, theft, things like that. The rest of the penal code remains in place.
And we've discussed the 72-hour thing before and what, what it means in terms of moving, and we've raised the issue of whether council needs to legislatively clarify what a move means. Define the move, in other words.
Right. And we had, we, James and I, in discussions with the sheriff's captain, had explained that the city's position is that movement is at least a block.
Right.
And so we'll circle back with the sheriffs. If they need further clarification, we can certainly bring it to council to get that clarified.
Yeah, we may have to do some legislative clarification. Okay, thank you.
Randy?
Just quickly, Mayor, thank you. It seems like, you know, having the, was it the, our district attorney? Who's our, the county attorney, the county attorney?
Mr. Nalorinco.
It's interesting that he was talking about, you know, victims and, and issues of that concern, and then here we are, talking about a homeless situation. And in the consent item in number H, which I was going to pull, it's the Ventura County-wide hopelessness. And it's interesting how all three of these are all playing out and playing together. Maybe that's the theme for the evening. But I think we should agendize this and have a deeper discussion, because once again, I'm hearing law enforcement as the, the means to the ends, and I'm not sure if that's what the means are. I'm not sure who we could send out there to maybe help these individuals, and I'm sure it can't just be one. But we need to think it through into how we're going to interact with individuals that are homeless or, or are in dire straits. And as much as I believe our police department could handle the situation and handle it well, I'm not sure if that's who our first responder should be. So maybe we need to agendize this, and maybe we need to talk about who should our first responder be, and how should we connect and interact with these individuals and help them. So I'll bring that up later in the evening on future agenda items. And again, when we get to consent, I'm going to pull H, so we can just briefly talk about it, because it seems like we're, we are talking a little more in depth than what we should be in responding to this citizen's concerns.
Correct. Okay, thank you. So let's move on. That's it, Gail, for public comment?
Correct.
Okay, so let's move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to?
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
I'm going to be pulling L, the donation agreement, from the consent calendar.
Okay. Anything else? Randy, you're pulling?
I'd like to pull H, just for a brief discussion.
L and H. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve everything else?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great. Roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, so let's look at H first.
So Mayor, I just had some, thank you, thank you. I just had some questions regarding this. I read it thoroughly, and it's, and it's, and it's interesting. There's a lot of beneficial aid that's out there in the public arena. I'm just not sure how many homeless people or, or people in dire straits are aware. And, and I was thinking about this repurposing of policing and how that discussion is ongoing and how this might be exactly what the community was talking about in regards to how we interact with our citizens. And so having said that, I see some benefits into us figuring out as a council how we can better help individuals of needs in this community. And in this section here on the Ventura County-wide homelessness, I, I just think that it would go hand in hand with any type of future discussions with our police department for additional or modification of existing policing policies and how we can incorporate something like this into it. So that again, we don't have a first responder who, who, as well as our police officers are trained, I'm just not sure that, that they need to be the first person interacting with the homeless person or a person of need in, in a lot of these situations. So that's why I pulled it. Another question is I have, who interacts on the city behalf? Is it the help of Ojai that puts forth the policies that are in this section? Is that who we're depending on? Would that be our first responder? I'm not sure if it is. And the VCCOC coordinator, would it be beneficial that maybe, again, we agendize him and have them come in and do a presentation so that we better understand what the county's doing and how it interacts with our community? So I just thought it was, it was an interesting read, and it was valuable, and it was important for the times that we're in. And again, I'll bring it up later on in the evening as far as agendizing it. So thank you.
There's no public comment on this, Gail? This item?
We have two people who have signed up for public comments on the consent calendar, plus Christine Golden, who signed up for public communications. I don't have any information on, on... Um, I don't have any information on, on these speakers, on which item on the consent calendar they want to speak on. So I can bring them on if you'd like and they can say.
I, I'm fairly certain they're speaking on another item. Um, so I can quickly answer a couple of those questions, uh, just for some background information. Uh, the, uh, continuum of care is currently, they currently operate and they've been actually, uh, operating, um, with all the cities during COVID to make sure to, uh, this is why we partnered with, um, the county and the other cities to, on projects like Project Room Key, where, uh, rooms were provided to the homeless during COVID. So we've been partnering with them. It was actually kind of, um, uh, funny. It was, uh, by all intents and purposes, the city's been working with them as if we were part of this MOU. And it wasn't until recently when we kind of, uh, checked the paperwork that we realized the city actually never officially signed on. So, so it's been operating that way. We just haven't, we haven't dotted the, the i's and crossed the t's. But to answer your question about who's like the, um, contact person, who's the service provider locally? It's, there's really two main ones within the city and that's going to be the city of Ojai and Help of Ojai. Um, and so during COVID, when we've had different projects and things like the, um, uh, Project Room Key and the, um, some of the food services, those have all gone either through the city or through the Help of Ojai. And so they are the, the main two providers. Uh, the other potential provider is the, um, Ojai Valley Family Shelter. They, uh, Help of Ojai has signed on to this MOU and they are also participating in it. Help, uh, the family shelter has not signed on to the MOU yet. And I spoke with the, um, the, uh, lead of the continuum of care and she stated that she believes it's just because, um, it's a lot of paperwork that hasn't been processed yet, similar to, to the situation we were in. So, so there's, those would probably be between the city, the Help of Ojai and the family shelter. Those would be the three main agencies that would be, um, part of this partnership in the Ojai Valley. And so, uh, and then also I just met with the, um, Tara Carruth, who is the lead on the continuum of care. And she did in fact offer to, uh, present if that would be something interesting to council. So if we do come back with some discussion of homelessness, uh, I will make sure to include her as well.
Uh, Susan?
Yeah, um, what I, what I do know is that we have some homeless people. I, I, I can think of two off the top of my head who've lived in Ojai all their life, but they're now being housed and they're grateful for being, having housing. I guess it's through the project, uh, Room Key or they're at a hotel in Oxnard. They don't have a car and they want to come back to Ojai. So I, I do want to support, uh, Randy and putting this on the agenda and figuring out if we at the very least can't have a legal campground or something so that they, people don't have to be in, in the neighborhoods. We definitely need to take a deeper look at this. And, and at the very least provide for people who've lived here all their life. You know, we can't provide for all the homeless, but certainly Vietnam vets who are homeless, who went to school at Nordoff, certainly as a community, we can provide something for those people.
It's a great opportunity for us to say yes to the resources, the county resources. And I spoke with Matt Lavier a couple of months ago and he really wants to partner with us, which is exciting. Um, Randy?
So just to follow up, James, I, I appreciate the, uh, the comments. But, um, if I asked you just bluntly, who would we send to solve that problem? Who would we send?
Uh, right now, we would send the, the Sheriff's Department.
Pardon?
We would share, send the police.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I just said, for example, in Portland and Berkeley, when you call the police for, you can ask for the de-escalation line specifically. And it's worked really well, apparently, uh, cahoots in Portland. So that's definitely, I agree with you, Randy, something we can look into because for most of the calls in Ojai, that's what is needed. Okay, great. Anything else? Uh, we can move on to L now. Is that you, Phil?
So, can I quickly ask, is, so are we, is that tabled for now or are we planning to?
Well, let's pass it, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would make a motion to approve item, uh, H.
Second.
Okay, uh, a vote, please, on this, Gail?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Great. All right, we'll move on to L and we have some public comments on this.
Yeah, let's go with that first. How about? Then I'll state my, my issue.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. I will bring Christine Golden back in. Christine, you should be able to speak. Uh, you're unmuted. You can go ahead and talk.
Thanks, Gail. Uh, good evening, council members and staff. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the donation of two benches and a sculpture at Clough Vista Park. I am appealing to you not as an arts commissioner, but on behalf of my brother, Tom Bostrum, the park's designer and my four siblings. Bostrum and Associates, along with Van Ada and Associates, won the Southern California chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects Top Landscape Design Award in 2005 for Clough Vista Park. The park, and these are Tom's own words, was designed to reflect the nature of Ojai's rugged countryside and native plant communities, a place unique in the entire world. From west end to east end, the five microclimates are represented. Every boulder, path, artwork and feature is carefully thought out. It's part of a whole. There are no areas at Clough Vista Park to co-opt and use for a completely different and discordant theme and purpose. At the very least, adding elements diminishes the award given for the park's cohesive design. Now Kathy Cluff could not be here tonight and she has given me permission to read her email. And so I'm going to do that now. And Kathy says, "The park was designed with intent. The idea of adding a memorial sculpture in this location is incongruent with the intention of what my parents worked so hard to create. I'm all in favor of the children's memorial and honor that desire, just not in Clough Vista Park. The park was designed to be a children's teaching park. It's about butterflies, native plants, regrowth and nature in general. Please preserve not only my parents' wishes, but the design integrity of our gateway park." And I want to add to that, that I agree with Kathy. The children's memorial garden deserves to be installed in an appropriate location, but Clough Vista is simply not that location. The suggested spot is an extension of the butterfly garden that lost its plants due to drought. And replanning efforts were forming right before COVID shutdown. I was forming a group called Friends of Clough Vista Park to replant that area with the blessing of then, uh, Public Works Director. In closing, I have two requests. First, that you deny the approval of the Ojai community, of the Ojai Children's Memorial Garden donation at Clough Vista Park. And second, that you pass a resolution in perpetuity that states no additions, no art, no benches, no alterations ever be allowed in Clough Vista Park. Thank you for listening. I appreciate all that each of you do for our city.
Thank you, Christine.
Next we have Marcy Toshir and she is coming in via, uh, cell phone. So, um, we'll, hopefully this will work. Marcy, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk.
Oh, okay. Success.
I can hear you.
I'm Marcy Toshir. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, uh, convey some thoughts about this, um, donation of, uh, sculpture and benches to be placed, uh, in Clough Vista Park. I'm not going to talk about the advisability, the substantive issue. I want to talk about procedural issue from the perspective of the Arts Commission. Uh, the Arts Commission was created in 2003 for the purposes of advising, uh, city council. That's section 416.07 of the municipal code. The powers and duties, um, is stated in the powers and duties of the Arts Commission as the very first duty, and that is to advise the council on all matters pertaining to the arts in the community. Um, so that's, that's kind of like the foundation for the Arts Commission. And, uh, if anything needs input, um, regarding art, sculpture and benches, it's, uh, the opinion of the Arts Commission. And we will give that opinion if this matter is brought before us to the city council. Uh, the Arts Commission vets quite a few works of public art in, in, uh, in the context of the Public Art Fund and Public Art Program. Technically, uh, this isn't subject to the, um, that, um, venue, but there, these, this is, I want to give you examples of things that we consider when we're vetting a prospective piece of public art. We look at the quality, the art form, the style, the environment that surrounds it, the permanence of it, the elements of design, the diversity of scale, style, et cetera. Um, and, uh, well, those, those are the main things. But, um, I think it's important to realize that those are things that we would be considering if the, um, and when the sculpture, the work of art is brought to us. What it is, is basically this is a donation and there is a procedure established uh, for the city of Ojai of donations of art, not only in a context of, uh, the Public Art Program, but just outright donations, which is what is, what is, what this is. So, um, we, uh, the acquisitions committee determines the, um, whether or not we will accept on behalf of the city or advise the city to accept a prospective piece of, uh, donated art. So things like this are things such as artistic merit, aesthetic value, materials and media, scale, liability, safety and maintenance, availability of suitable location and/or placement and installation requirements. These are the things that we consider. Um, so I appeal to you to, uh, from our point of view, the Arts Commission is not to accept or reject this, but please, just the next step, actually the first step should have been, this should have brought, been brought to our attention for an examination and, um, thorough vetting and decide this is still, regardless of the, how, how it originated, this is still a piece of public art in, in the, in the public view. And it needs to be of the level of all of our other works of art that are in, displayed in the city. So, um, I just think, um, this, that's a bad precedent to let anyone put a piece of art somewhere without any kind of vetting or determination of suitability and all of that. Any artist could decide, oh, I want to, you know, Ojai is, is a brand now. I, I want to donate a piece of art, say that it's all in the city of Ojai. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Marcy. Um, and we have one more, Gail?
Um, that is it. We have one more person signed up, but I do not see hers having logged into the queue.
Okay, thank you. Phil?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, you know, just a procedural point here. And that is it. One of the really distinctive aspects of governance in the, in our city is the role that the commissions play. And we, um, I think we make better decisions when we involve the commissions in these decisions. There's really two commissions involved in this matter. Uh, Park and Recreation, uh, Commission, uh, it is a park, and, and the Arts Commission, both of which have in our code that, uh, the very first, uh, power and duty is to act in an advisory council, advisory capacity, uh, to this council. So I just think we're going to make a better decision here if we, um, engage the commissions as per our usual practice. And the discussion that we just heard really is, should be at a commission level. And the other suggestions may come up or, or not. I don't know. I'm not going to, I don't want to speak to the, the merits of the particular proposal, but I do think it is the kind of thing that should be, uh, we should allow our commissions to engage in their, uh, primary duty of advisory capacity. So that's going to be my suggestion that we get, uh, commission input on this matter. Both commissions.
Randy?
Well, I think all the comments that were made are, are sound and, and the opinions make sense. Uh, however, I, I believe what the city manager, this is my perception, was trying to do was trying to, um, mitigate an issue here at city hall. Um, and had come to the conclusion that, um, through interacting with that group, that, that was a good site. Um, ultimately, whether it goes to the arts or goes to the parks or goes to historic preservation or goes anywhere, it still comes back to us five. So my suggestion tonight would be to have the city manager reconnect with this group. And maybe we find an appropriate place such as, um, the cemetery. And maybe we dedicate the north wall and offer them a space for a really nice memorial, um, for children. Um, I think we, I think in the past, we have talked about using the north end of the cemetery for different things. We've never done anything, but, um, it's quiet. It's serene. You go there to remember. Um, there's a lot of good things about it. And I think if we did it the appropriate way, that it might, uh, fit the needs of this group. So I would suggest that maybe before we send it back to the commissions, that we give the city manager another shot at this. And we just try to resolve it and try to move it forward. Um, that would be my take on this.
Susan?
Well, as I see it, we have two separate, uh, items. One is the, the sculpture and two is the location. And what I suggest is that we have the Park and Recreation Commission. I, I see five, four or five possible locations. I would like them to come back with, uh, to us with the pros and cons. As far as the cemetery goes, there is already an, an area that's dedicated to children. And, um, I agree with Randy, the cemetery, I hadn't thought of that till I heard, heard this, might be an appropriate place. But I would also like to know the pros and cons of Libby Park, of Vista Park. And also I want to make clear, um, the, 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 we're also being asked to name the area, um, behind city hall, right? As a, it's, it's still going to be called a children's memorial garden. And the reason the sculpture can't be there is due to the noise factor. Am I correct? Is that the reason? So, I mean, why are we separating the garden and the sculpture in the first place? So my understanding that's due to the noise factor? But they're still going to be an area known as the children's memorial garden. Is that correct?
Yes, so the, uh, area where the, where the two benches have been placed by the children's memorial garden, that's just here behind, um, city hall, that would, uh, if the city council approved it, that would still be called the children's memorial garden. Uh, they did express that they wanted the statue located at another location. I'm not sure, uh, exactly the reason, but at, at different times, they have indicated that the, they want a quieter location. Yes.
Well, why don't I, I'm sorry, Randy?
No, go ahead. I'm just wanted to, uh, we, we're weighing, we're weighing in. I'll wait my turn. I'm good.
Well, it seems to me that maybe we have a consensus to, to continue this item for the, uh, further issues and discussion for the city manager and give discretion to the city manager, but continue, maybe a motion to continue with no action pending, uh, city manager's further investigation and discussion.
That'd be, yeah. And I, I would agree with Suzie and Phil, you know, let's ask the parks, since it's going to be in a park, let's ask the Parks and Rec Department to weigh in and just.
Yeah, if that, if that becomes the proposal, yeah.
In terms of the cemetery, Randy, you know, I've talked to the, the group specifically and, and I got the message that they would like it to be in a place that's visible for the community, um, you know, in town. So that's why we have a variety of parks, but Libby Park might be an option. Or maybe. So that's why we have a variety of parks, that Libby Park might be an option, or maybe, uh, once HELP moves, we have that whole area of the campus that's open, so.
Yeah, let's, let's consider what happens when HELP moves. Can that be part of, of what the city manager looks into? Because then the, that one reason I thought of Libby is because it's connected to the, um, the demonstration garden where the, you know, to the area where the Children's Memorial Garden is located. So, um, but I would, i- if, if HELP, if the location were behind HELP of Ojai is a possibility, I would like to, to, that to be included in.
I, I'm not, I'm not taking any options off the table, I'm just saying, my motion is to continue with no action to allow the city manager more investigation and input.
Okay. Randy?
So, once again, this goes back to, I think, Christina making, um, or making a request that, um, that we never modify or change or do anything to cluff Vista Park. In the reality of public facilities, they're all, at one point or another, going to be changed. So, um, I would never accept that as, as something that, that I would agree to. Um, you can question public art, and you can question where's the appropriate place for it, but when you question parks and you look at the, the fact that they're constantly changing and evolving, and, um, and just look at this discussion, we're looking at five other parks, we're looking at another area of Libby. Um, we're, I, I mean, um, again, I would, I'm just going to end it for me and say, let's give this back to the city manager, let him work with that group, and let them figure out something that's appropriate, and that hopefully it fits into the character of the community, um, and the needs of the community.
So are you seconding my motion?
Yes, I am, Bill.
All right.
I thought your motion was beyond just sending it back to the group and the city manager, I thought your motion was to involve the two commissions.
Oh, my motion is to continue the item with no action for the city manager to do further investigation and discussion.
But, so, but not just.
All of us would weigh in in terms of working with the city manager on our opinions.
Okay, so it's not just the city manager consulting with the Children's Memorial Group, it's beyond?
No, we, we would be, we would be talking to the city manager with our opinions, is my take on that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, we have a motion in a second, we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Protem Wierig?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, all right, it's nine o, let's, uh, take our seventh inning stretch, and we'll be back in a few minutes.
Sorry to lay that on you, James, but I just have so much respect for you, I just, that's what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're, uh, adjourned for a few minutes, seven, yep, yep.
Couldn't you tell the public that we've reorganized the ending of the, the next items? People might be still thinking that item six is last.
Okay, so when we come back, um, I will say the order again.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, see ya.
Betsy, I'm back. Betsy, I'm back.
Oh, thanks, Gail.
Okay.
Are we ready to come back? Waiting for James. There he is. Hi, James. Okay, uh, we're back, thank you very much. Uh, we'll start with number three, item number three. And, uh, just to review, we moved, uh, item number four to the end, since it's the longest, so it'll go three, five, six, and then four. So number three, Ojai Certified Farmer's Market License Agreement, to approve and authorize the city manager to enter into license agreement with the market for one year and two additional mutual one-year extensions. James, we take, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, uh, we'll keep this one very, uh, short, but happy to answer any questions. Uh, in, in short, the city in the past has issued, uh, what we call non-proprietary encroachment permits, which are administrative, uh, permits signed off by the Public Works Director, and those permits have been issued to the farmer's market for five-year terms. Um, one of the things that we have, um, talked to the farmer's market about, and what, and one of the things we've realized is, um, uh, one of the hot topics that comes up very often is, is people typically like to talk about the farmer's market and, you know, talk about, um, you know, just this morning, in fact, I had somebody call me that didn't know this was on the agenda, and they asked if the city, um, you know, could work with the farmer's market group to do something, you know, a little different on the weekends, or, or, you know, uh, we get requests to look at things like, um, the hours, or like what booths there are, and all those types of things. And so, uh, really, the point of this agreement is that, um, it's a, a big topic here in Ojai, we think that it should be subject to a, a public review process, where, you know, once a year, uh, we come back to city council, we, um, and, you know, maybe a consent item in the future if, if there aren't any ideas, but it would come back to city council, which would give the council and the public the opportunity to, to, um, uh, discuss it, bring up any potential, uh, ideas or any questions about how the, the market's operating. And so, uh, we are recommending that we move over to this license agreement, which would then have the, the reviews with the city council. Uh, for all intents and purposes, none of the conditions are being proposed to change at this time. Um, the hours and the location remain the same. We have been talking to the farmer's market about the potential, uh, of, of looking at those in the future, but at this point, we're not recommending any change. Um, but we just, um, we, we're just recommending we go to the license agreement so that there is a, uh, a public opportunity to, to discuss it in the future. So with that, the, um, the agreement, as you mentioned, is a one-year term, it has additional mutual options that may be exercised, um, and, um, but it, it otherwise keeps most of the conditions in place regarding hours, location, uh, dates, et cetera. So, uh, we are recommending that the city council approve it, and with that, I'll, um, turn it back over to the city council.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Uh, Susan and Randy?
Um, James, on number six, where it says vendors shall be limited to only those selling produce or food products or items related to agriculture and food products, that also includes things like beeswax candles, local soap, maybe some special things at Christmas, there's no restriction on that. I mean, everything is at some point related to the earth.
Yeah, and actually, you know, that's actually been a term that we, uh, the city council of the past, it actually, I think it was in 2013, the city council actually, um, specifically, uh, stated that, uh, the council was okay with non-food items. Uh, and so, uh, that language is from the existing permit, but it's been expanded pretty, pretty broadly, and we wouldn't expect, uh, to put a limitation on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Randy?
So, James, just on that same venue, um, what, what does the county, um, what jurisdiction does the county have over this regarding food and food services and, and selling, um, of either the products that Suzie talked about, or other types of products other than, um, food and, let's say, baked food?
Yeah, so the county, uh, I can't remember if it's environmental health or public health, I think it's environmental health, but the county environmental health does have, um, uh, some oversight that they review, but also, the, the, the main thing with the farmer's market is that it's a certified farmer's market, and so they actually get their certification, um, and are subject to review through that process as well.
Well, I just didn't see it, I noticed anywhere in here that there was another juris, you know, that another jurisdiction or another body had, um, some governing factors over them, so I'd like to see that included. The, um, the other thing is, you know, like we, like just what happened with COVID last year, if there's an emergency, um, declaration, I didn't see anything in here regarding that. Um, there's a 30-day notice, but I didn't see anything in any form of emergency, and, um, our powers and, and, um, and their ability to deal with it. So I think that something like that should be included. And then, the other thing on, um, your insurance is, I didn't see, again, anything that stated that they had to submit to you a list of, of employees, um, so that we knew exactly who was being, you know, who we would interact or who we'd involve ourselves with, or how we even know who the employee of the week is there on, on Sunday. Um, so I think that's important, that we clarify that. And instead of two trash cans, this is probably the smallest, I like to see six, two at the back, two at the front, and two in the middle.
Do we see any questions, though? Any other questions?
Can we, can we? That's a question. Thank you, Mayor. Can, can we think of upgrading, um, the two to six? Um, and then I'll, I, I have a couple more questions when we get to deliberation.
I could answer just one, one of those questions. The other ones, uh, the last two questions, we can follow up and, and see if we can add those. The, the one comment, or the question about, does this address potential emergency situations? That was in our mind when we drafted it, so what we did was, under specific terms, like the, um, dates and times of the farmer's market and the location, we have language that, that states that if the city, um, needs to change the date or the time of the location, including because of an emergency, that we have the ability to do that. And so to your point, to your point, the one challenge with that is, because they're certified, they, they would have to then work with, uh, other agencies to do that, but, but the agreement would give us the ability to do that if we needed to, so.
Uh, Bill?
Quick question, how long has the be, the fee been $50?
It's been that, uh, since, I believe it was 2013 it was set at that amount.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes, Randy?
Um, you know, under miscellaneous, uh, could you clarify 21-1? Um, this agreement may create a possessory, maybe this is for Matt, possess this, here, help me with that word, possessory interest which is subject to property taxation, um, and organization may be subject to such taxes, is that a liability they have, a liability we have, or it's just in there for GP?
Yeah, I, I don't think that it's likely to actually happen, but it is there to protect the city. If, if, um, if an interest is created where there is a tax, they, then the farmer's market has to pay it, but I don't see that actually happening, and I doubt it's happened in the 10 years it's been at that location, so.
And I would add that by switching away from a conditional use permit into a facility use agreement, the intention is to not create possessory interest, meaning not create a property right for the farmer's market, instead it's a license agreement. Uh, but if the county assessor controller who assesses property taxes disagrees with us, then the farmer's market is responsible for those taxes.
And then, Mayor, just two more questions. Do, James, do we, um, do we require them to designate an employee to be on-site every Sunday or every day that they're open?
So, you know, we could clarify that in the agreement. The, the idea, as it's drafted, is that, um, the manager Cynthia, uh, would be that person, and she's the person that we would contact and the person that would be on-site, but it's not clear to your point, so we can, we can clarify that and, um, and add that clearly to the agreement.
Right, I'm aware in the past that, that we hadn't had a contact person on Right, I'm aware in the past that we hadn't had a contact person onsite and that we had to call Cynthia. And a lot of times, I think she lives, well, it says she lives here in Ojai, but I thought at one time she lived in Santa Barbara and wasn't always available. So I could be wrong on that. I'm just stating that. And then my last question is, did we, did we, did we go to the other businesses in the area and ask them what the impacts of the farmer market is on them regarding parking on Sunday? If there's, you know, if there's, there's none, there's none. If, if there's some, what are they? Did we, did we do a survey with, with those individuals or those companies or property owners?
So we had a, we had a meeting with the farmer's market and the Chamber of Commerce where we wanted to get some feedback from the local businesses and, and, you know, if, if there was feedback about, you know, little tweaks that could be made that would help the businesses, that, that we could do that. The Chamber of Commerce Executive Jamie Fleming was at that meeting. He then met with some, some businesses and he reported back that at this point, he wasn't hearing a lot of require, or a lot of asks from the local businesses. I know he had listed some of the businesses he talked to. But so that's why ultimately, we ended up not suggesting any modifications or changes. But again, keeping the discretion and the ability to do so if we do start hearing from those members of the public, or I'm sorry, those business owners.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Suzie, question?
No, suggestion, I'll wait.
Okay, a public comment on this, Gail?
We have one person here, Ashley Corman. I will bring her in. Ashley, you should be able to speak now. If you're unmuted, you can go ahead.
I'm just, I'm Cynthia's daughter, you know, and I'm still involved from afar. So I'm just listening in, no comments.
Thank you. And also, council, if you have any questions for Cynthia Corman, she's made herself available this evening as well.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to discussion. Suzie?
James, you know, my recollection is at one point, we were looking at if it was possible to close that section of the street off the traffic Sunday morning. And at that point, it was, it didn't seem possible, right? Because of the lavender inn and Rainbow Bridge claimed that they had deliveries. But I was wondering if we could at least on Sunday morning, reduce the speed limit to 15 miles per hour? You know, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 1:00 PM?
That's something I, if council, is, if there's consensus on that, that's something I could meet with the police chief and the public works director and see how we could do that. It's not something we've looked at. We had looked into potentially closing the street. We have not looked at that before. So we can look at that and report back.
The reason I say that, it's just on my mind, maybe Councilmember Wyrick remembers when we were campaigning, we did see some people speeding, impatient. And it's, it's just a good reminder. I mean, I don't want anybody really, most people would go slow anyway because it's so heavily, heavily, you know, there's so many pedestrians walking back and forth.
Need to creep through there with anything motorized. Our bicycles even, they go through in there too fast sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, we could look into, yeah, some temporary options for, for that, so.
Yeah, anything to make it more pedestrian-friendly that we can do. I think it's always good.
Well, Bill?
Just a small point following up on my question. 50 bucks in 2013 is already equivalent to just under 60 bucks today from the beginning of 2013 this far into 2021. And, you know, the fee should cover the cost of, at least have some relationship to covering the cost of, the administrative cost of, you know, of handling this thing. You put a lot of time into it. There's reporting, you know, I have to check on insurance and stuff. I wonder if we ought to just set it to 100 bucks instead of 50? See if there's any appetite in the rest of council for that.
Can we think about that for a moment?
Randy, raise his hand. Randy?
So I, I knew Bill was going to go there. So right now, they're paying roughly 2,400 a year. They were open every Sunday roughly, you know, four times a month. I'm kind of in agreement. You know, part of what I look at is, is the impact on the other businesses. It's, the downtown is shut down to a degree on Sundays for the farmer market. And that's what I look at is all, you know, we all, we like to say that a lot of the people that visit the farmer market, visit the other businesses, but I'm not sure if that's true. Because we haven't studied it, so we don't really know. So I'd be inclined to increase the fee. I'm open to any suggestion. You know, if it's 100, it's 100. If it's more, it's more.
Just try to cover the cost of administration.
Well.
And, and one final thought, Mayor, if we're going to police Matilah, we need to police Aliso because there's just as many issues on it as there are in Matilah. So I'm not sure how we can dedicate policing, policing just to those two streets every Sunday. I would leave that up to the city manager and the chief to figure out. But there's more than just one concern on Matilah. And then the other, the other factor is now with the increased bicycling, especially electric bicycles, their speeds are greater than 15, greater than 10, sometimes 20, sometimes 30. I've heard some can go to 40. So again, you got to take a look at all of this and the content of what we're trying to achieve there in that, in both of those corridors, not in one.
Suzie?
Well, I, I don't want to involve the police with this. So I would suggest just signage at the, at the, at the, at both entrances, reminding people to, you know, to be courteous, slow down. I mean, there has to be some way. I don't like the idea of if we have to, if we post a different, I don't know. But, but going, so it was just a suggestion, and if it's feasible or not, I just would hope people, most people, they're not out there to, you know, running over people so far. But by, as far as increasing the price, my question to James is, are we, are they paying enough to cover costs? Or is this justified? I wouldn't, the city should not be making money, a profit off of these fees. It should be strictly to cover the cost of staff, correct?
And the wear and tear of the facility.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, it's, it's hard to say what an average year is, especially this year with COVID and everything. I would say this year, for sure, you know, different points when we had, when we had our code enforcement out enforcing social distancing and, you know, crowd limits and things like that. I would say this year, for sure, we spent more on the farmer's market than we received. In a normal year where it's more standard, you know, maybe that is not true, but I would say for sure this year. And I think it has been, I think it was 2013 when the city council, and I, to clarify, I think the city council in 2013 actually had an item to discuss whether to increase the fee from 50 dollars. So I think that fee's actually been in place even longer than that. And so.
Worth even less in real terms now.
Yeah, yeah. So it, you know, that is something probably worth looking at. And so the, obviously, it's a two, it's a contract, it's an agreement, it's between two parties, so it obviously has to be negotiated with the farmer's market. So that's something that we can go back and work with them on if that's identified as an issue.
Yeah, I, I would be okay to do it if you can negotiate and get their feedback, whether it's a hardship or not. I see the farmer's market as a wonderful community service. There's nobody there is getting rich off of farmer's market. I mean, if they are, it's, it's the exception, not the rule. It's, it's more important than ever during this, during a period where we're in possibly for a long pandemic, that people have access to healthy food. It's extremely important. So all of that has to be considered. But you can bring it up. I'd be fine with.
Yeah. One idea to move forward would be, we can, we'll take the feedback, but we can meet with the farmer's market in the next week or so and put, you know, negotiate something that works for both the farmer's market and the city, and then bring it back on consent on the 28th.
Randy?
Just one, just a final thought. Because we, because we're, we don't have a condition of the contract to review their books, in other words, we're not getting a percentage of their gross, I don't think we're ever going to know how much money they make, or if they do make money. Personally, I don't even think that that's any of our business. I don't really care if they make money or not make money. They show up, so obviously, they're doing something. The, the second thing is maybe we need to have public works actually assess the parking lot because of what I said previous. The money should be, the money that we're procuring, I agree, Suzie, should not be to put any burden on any of the individuals selling product there. But we should recover the cost of repairing the parking lot, striping, asphalting, the conditions of the sidewalks, front and back, the conditions of the approaches. I mean, there's a, the conditions of the trees. There's a lot of things that are going to deteriorate due to the use now, whether we're parking cars there or whether we're selling agriculture products one day a week on Sunday. I'm just saying that there's a balance there that has to be created. And no one's ever brought us any numbers based on that parking lot. So I don't even know if there's any correlation or if we should have one.
And the administrative costs.
Pardon?
And the administrative costs as well.
Yes.
So I think it's just worth pointing out that the 50 dollars is pretty incidental, 100 dollars is pretty incidental. And if it, if it's been more than 2013, it hadn't been changed, in real terms, we're probably close to 100 from where it was first 50.
Okay, well, are we ready for a motion? Yes? Suzie, you, well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize, to approve and authorize the city manager to enter into a license agreement with the market for one year and two additional mutual one-year extensions.
Would you take a friendly amendment to raise the fee to 100 in that motion?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second it.
And to, can we add additional trash cans to that facility?
Are they needed? Do they need them?
Well.
Can we say if needed?
Needed. Can we investigate that?
Yes, we can, we can investigate that.
Okay. May, have the roll call, please. Pardon me? Oh, sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
I thought we were just going to let James go talk to them first and see if it was a hardship and negotiate with them, or are we just moving right to, because it's going to feel a lot different to them if we tell them we've all voted at 100 dollars on their new contract, take it or leave it versus what I thought we were talking about a minute ago, if James was going to talk to them first. But maybe I didn't understand that.
Okay, so can we agree to take that off and have James negotiate that? Bill, are you okay with that?
Could someone, could someone please repeat it? I didn't hear it.
The, the contract would come back at a, at a future meeting, probably, hopefully on consent if, if we're able to work something out.
Yeah, all I'm saying, if we're not approving a contract, then.
Yep.
Right, what James said before, right? Is now, did I hear it correctly, James? That's what I thought you were going to do. Go let James go talk to them.
Yep.
Make sure it's not a hardship. Something, anywhere that's a different number, they'll bring it back and we'll talk about it again. If not, if everybody's in agreement on their end, then we're, we'll have it on the consent calendar. But, you know, I mean, even talk to them, I don't want them to feel like it's a take it or leave it 100 dollars, because I have no idea. That's not a ton. I mean, it's, I was mapping it out, it's maybe a couple bucks per vendor per week. It's not a ton. But still, you know, these are paper-thin margins, you're sure they're operating under. I know they've said before that it is not a real lucrative business.
But the principle, the principle of the thing is that we cover our, our costs for providing a, our administrative costs.
Some things we, if we take a small loss on the farmer's market, that's a really great thing for Ojai. I hope we can recover all of it, but, I mean, I think.
All I'm saying, if it was 50 bucks 10 years ago, that's not 50 bucks now.
No, you said it's about 60.
No, I understand. So, you know, in real terms, we should stay constant in real terms.
Randy?
So, because I could barely hear Ryan for, for some reason, what I'm, what I'm hearing is this will come back to us with the modifications that the mayor and William and I have addressed. Is that, is that what I heard?
Yes.
And, and I, I think the last thing I'd like to say before we vote is, the public good that the farmer's market does, we can't lose sight of that. That's why actually having some numbers as to what it costs to maintain it and whatever your administrative fees would be, James, I think are important for us to know. And that might help us to figure out how to increase it appropriately if we choose to.
Yes, I agree. What a great benefit to our community and Sunday ritual for a lot of us, so. Well, we have a, we have a motion in a second, so you have a roll call, please, Gail?
I guess it's modified to send back to the city manager?
Yep.
With no approval of the contract? Okay, all right.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, we'll move on to the next. It's item number five, the COVID report from James. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick presentation that I will be sharing my screen for, for a second. Are you able to see the screen? Yeah, okay. So we have a COVID update for today. We wanted to start by going over the trends. I think we talked last council meeting that we were in the midst of a, of a surge. It wasn't quite back at the levels that we saw in late December, early January, but it was, we were seeing a surge and the face covering order had just been put into place countywide. So with that, we wanted to give just a brief update on how things have proceeded over the last few weeks since that time. Some may have seen that there was a big increase in the average case rate and the cases reported yesterday, I believe it was. And the county has reported that that was actually due to a data backlog. So it's not as concerning as it may have initially seemed. Some of the numbers seem to jump a bit where I think the seven-day average case rate went from about 16 to almost 22. But again, that was due to a data backlog. And so this chart is helpful to put it in context of looking at the last year or so and seeing where we are now, which is obviously this right-hand side where we are seeing a, you know, a bump here. But compared to where we were in December and January, where the increase was much more severe. But part of the reason why the county put the face covering order in and why some of these restrictions have been put back into place is because, because of the need to stop that from, from spiking and kind of trying to keep it flat, which, which is happened pretty well over the last couple of weeks since that's happened. This chart in particular is actually for the 93023 zip code, which is 20,000 people. And so this is actually very specific data for us, and it shows that, like the rest of the county and the state, we did see a surge here over the last month or so, but it's stabilizing, is, is the feeling. More than case numbers, the two important statistics in our conversations with public health and the county are the hospitalization rate and the ICU rate. You know, if you think of that logically, if people are testing positive, but they aren't showing symptoms, they aren't getting hospitalized, they aren't ending up in the ICU, then it's not quite the drain on the resources, which is really the, the challenge if people are being hospitalized in, in the ICU and we don't have capacity or beds for those people. So a positive thing we're seeing is that those numbers have come down, actually, pretty, the hospitalization rate has come down pretty significantly from just three weeks ago, from when we were back up to about. when we were back up to about 147, and now we're, we're back down three weeks later to 103. That, those numbers are the highest they've been since about mid-February, but they're trending the right direction as we speak. And I think in particular yesterday there was a big drop of about 30 cases, or 30 people that had been hospitalized who were no longer hospitalized. And so those numbers are coming down, and those are two of the key metrics that the county is looking at and the state looks at when deciding what to do next and what orders to put in place or keep in place. And we'll, we'll get to that in a minute when we talk about the face covering update. But one other piece of data we wanted to show is now that a large percentage of the county is, is fully vaccinated, the county is putting out more complete data for cases related to the fully vaccinated population. And so this is the latest update related to that. Of our almost a million population for the county, we have about five, just over 500,000 who have been fully vaccinated. Amongst those 500,000, we've only had 2,449 cases, which is an infection rate of about half a percent. So very different story from the infection, or the case rates that we're seeing amongst the, the non-vaccinated at this point. We also, we know that 240 of those cases, about 10% of them, have occurred in the last 14 days, which is part of that surge we were talking about. And that, and then as far as two key metrics, which is the number of deaths among those fully vaccinated from COVID-19 and the hospitalizations from those fully vaccinated, we have 21 deaths of those 2,449 cases and 129 of the 2,449 cases have resulted in hospitalizations. So again, it just speaks to, with, what we're seeing with the fully vaccinated is that even if you get sick, a much lower rate of people going to the hospital, which again helps the overall picture because it means that there's beds and capacity for those that really need it. So, so just to kind of paint the picture, I think at this point, especially as far in as we're into this, sometimes it feels like nothing's changed or like sometimes it feels like things are almost going back to normal. I think the reality is, is in the middle where we are still in the midst of a surge, but we're seeing, we have better results and better outcomes than we did a year ago or, or even six months ago. So with that, locally, testing, it has been added on Mondays. So we now have COVID-19 testing at Sarzoni Park on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We also worked with COVID Clinic and, to get some increased staffing at the site. We're hearing positive on that, that I think we all were aware about a month ago, we were hearing about long lines at the site. We've been hearing that that has been diminished now. We are seeing a lot of people come in for testing. I think about a month ago, we had about 110 tests over two days. This most recent week, we had 260 tests over three days. So it seems like adding that day, it was good timing because it's, I think we would have had higher capacity showing up on the two days if we hadn't done that. So, so that's gonna remain available, available at this time for the time being. And we do recommend, if you're planning to go to Sarzoni Park, get pre-registered, go online to covidclinic.org. It makes the process much smoother and quicker. And then the latest update regarding the face covering policies is that when the county had put the order in, in effect on August 20th, they had announced that it would be in effect until September 19th, which is Sunday. And so just this morning, County, Ventura County Public Health announced that the order will very likely be extended past September 19th. So they have not officially extended it, but they're indicating that, and we're expecting that they will extend it past this weekend. So we don't have a date to report yet, but we'll be posting updates on that. And anybody interested can check our website or our Facebook page in the next couple of days, and we should have information on that soon. But it looks like that order is gonna be extended at this point. And then lastly, we just wanted to note that locally, we are getting calls about, with a lot of questions about if certain businesses have to have face coverings, if outdoor dining needs to have face coverings. And so just as a reminder, the order does require face coverings indoors in public settings, but not outdoors. We've been having our code enforcement officers go out to local businesses with copies of our flyers and the county's flyers. And we've been doing a lot of education and outreach. And I think a lot of the calls right now are kind of based on that distinction of whether somebody serving food outside needs to wear a face covering. And so we've gone out, we've talked to businesses about that, made sure they're aware of the requirements. And we keep, we'll keep kind of doing that, doing the outreach and putting some of these reminders around town. So, so with that, that is the latest update on COVID. And we're happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Any public comment on this item, Gail?
No public comment.
Well, I would just say, like to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, James, for, it's a whole part of your job you never knew existed, right? So you've done such an incredible job and being, taking the bull by the horns and being ahead of the game. So we're, Ojai is so lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion ends, or I guess we can move on. All right, thank you. All right. Thanks, James. Well, let's move on to item number six, a request from Councilmember Blatts and Councilmember Haney to review city protocols, particularly the process of placing items on the agenda. And just historically, we're returning to this item, which was on, which Councilmember Blatts and Councilmember Haney put on the agenda on the 12th of January, my first meeting. And we've talked about it then, and we're coming back to it. So do you all have a presentation?
Well, of course we do.
Are you gonna give it?
Of course we will. Did you open this up? Are we ready?
Oh, yeah. Could you, yeah.
So actually, you brought up January. We might have brought it up even before that too, when Mayor Johnson was around. So the purpose and the intent of protocols, I'm just gonna make clear some, some, some parts of this, of this little manual that we have. Okay? It's the rules of decorum. It's how we conduct meetings. Correct? It's what we do. It's what us five choose. So I think it's important that we understand that. It's, it's our board meeting. It's our opportunity to meet and discuss and interact and do the people's business. The second thing that it does that I think is most important is we take action by council. We discuss things. We listen to the recommendations made by city staff. We listen to other council members as things are presented. Public comments are allowed. So when we look at the whole body of this, of protocols, it has everything to do with how we conduct ourselves in this room. And the reason I brought it back, and I'll be honest with you, is because of what took place at the last council meeting. The fact that we had an agendized item, and it was the second time that someone had decided that they weren't prepared and pulled it. And I have other issues with that that I'm gonna bring up along with these protocols. But that's what kind of set it in motion is I just, I just felt that if we're here to do the people's business and we have a limited amount of time to do it, then we need to set an agenda. We need to know what that agenda is. We need to prepare ourselves for that agenda. And then we need to come in here, open, willing to listen, and to participate in that. And I haven't seen that recently. And, and, and it's tiring. And that's the reason that I brought this back. So I would like to see the council go to a, set the agenda, like tonight, for instance, set the agenda for the next meeting based on the information that the city manager has, the information that the mayor has. You present it tonight, we agendize it, and we move it forward. And that way, we know what we're gonna prepare for, for the next two weeks. This all of a sudden, thinking we're prepared and then having someone throw something in there in the middle of it, or two things or three things, it's just not any way to conduct business. And that's the part that concerns me, is, is a lot of the stuff that I see being thrown on the agenda in the middle of the week actually has nothing to do with anything that we've discussed prior, previously, or has been brought to my attention. Now, I'm only one of five, so I'm not gonna hear everything out there. But I'm just saying, there's a better way to do this, and I think that we can do it by simplifying it, by setting the agenda and being prepared as council members to act on that agenda. I'll have a couple more comments after Ryan, if he'd like to speak, and also after you open it up to the public.
All right. Well, the number one comment I get from most people I talk to about our city council is that we talk a lot of, we talk about a lot of stupid stuff. We don't get a lot done and we waste a lot of time. So I just thought that this seemed like one rational way to support, trying to help maybe change that. The public comments that I read about, that had a tone, even kind of the way you introduced this, Mayor Stix, that there was some conspiracy about mayor power and this is a departure from history. That has nothing to do with any reason why I seconded this and thought it might be a good idea to talk about it again. And I had nothing to do with putting it on the agenda in January either. I was on the council, but I didn't, I didn't put it on it. I, I just thought it was a reasonable way to maybe help figure out a way that we, it seems like we end up debating a lot of things that get us nowhere and we don't end up passing and we review them a lot and we go backwards a lot. And I wish I had a better answer. I just thought this might be an answer. But by no means is this some, I mean, by, by making it having to be three people in general out of the five of us, it hurt, it makes it harder for everybody. It doesn't, I, in no way is it supposed to decentralize the power of the mayor's ability to be able to put something on the agenda. But I understand that that's how some people took it. I just think it's, was one option that I hadn't really thought of. And maybe we talk about, about how to clean up and make things a little more efficient and just get to things that seem a little more important and we're not taking two steps forward and one step back all the time. That's all.
Any questions? Well, who put it on the agenda in January? Randy? You had to have two council members.
I didn't look it up. You brought it up.
Honestly, I have no idea. I seriously, personally have no idea.
James, do you remember? Because I watched the meeting in December, and I'm pretty sure that Randy brought it up and you, you agreed, Ryan. It's December 15th?
I honestly have no recollection, but I.
Well, Mayor, if you want to ask me why I brought it up, it was publicly for the same reasons I brought it up this time.
The mayor not being able to put something on the agenda, that's never why this issue.
That's my point. I'm asking who put it on the agenda at that meeting. And I watched the meeting and it was the both of you, just to confirm that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Could we move on to public comment, please?
Okay, we have 11 people signed up to speak and 10 are in the queue. I can go ahead and bring them in. If you'd like to keep them at three minutes, that's up to you.
That'd be great. Since it's been on the agenda twice, I think it's important to listen to everybody. Thank you.
The first person is Bill Miley, and I will bring him in. Mr. Miley, you can speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
I am unmuted.
Go ahead.
Hello. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. In general, I think the council meetings go fairly well. I've reviewed the adopted protocols. But getting to the point at issue today, I have a couple of comments. One is on agenda formation. I suggest consideration be given to adding the position of mayor pro tem. However, my preference is to add the mayor pro tem as a consultative, not decisionary, so that because of the leadership that person carries in reserve, they'll know what's going on. And they can also try to influence it. The second is the issue of requests by two members of the council to place something on the agenda, which I assume is usually without staff involvement. And here are a couple of my comments. Recent items seem to have been in early draft stages and were, from my opinion, challenging to understand and to critique, to consider application to a city. So I have a couple of thoughts on how to manage that. Such items, when being proposed by two council members, should be presented to the entire council in an abstract format, which is short, containing purpose, method, basis with references, problems being addressed, and what's the likely sequence for adopting. But not to present it in detail as if it's ready to be adopted as a program, a plan, or an ordinance. The purpose is to be flexible and allow the council to address through thought-out subjects, problems defined, solutions, innovative ideas. Those are the, that are not part of the, quote, "keep the city alive and well," quote, agenda. So in essence, it proposed, items proposed by two council members should get a quick review on its merits, how to make the city better, and then a vote to bring it back if needed, after the city manager and staff works with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Next, we have Catherine Ferguson. Ms. Ferguson, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Thanks for taking my call tonight. So I definitely, I definitely took this item on the agenda to, to be, in, in the idea that it would remove our mayor's ability to put items on the agenda. That's how I interpreted this. And I just, I wanted to say that it does feel like it's been a longstanding tradition. And it would, in my mind, would not be the correct thing to do in order to remove the mayor's ability. It's why we voted for our mayor. I will say that it seems that 63% of the people who voted did vote for Betsy. And to represent them, when, as, as a community, she has our voice. So when it comes to people's business, as we call it, I would say that we've asked her to be able to do that for us. And, forgive me, I'm not used to, I'm not used to speaking. In, in the past, when we do look back to Mayor Johnston, who, who was elected twice by voters, I don't feel that this was ever an issue that was put on the agenda to remove his, his ability. So I'm just, I wanted to say my part. I feel like we, the people, did elect the mayor to represent us, to do the people's business, as, as you might say. And to remove that, goes against what we've asked for. So there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Next, we have Corinna Wright. Ms. Wright, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. I agree with Catherine. It looks like. I agree with Catherine, it looks like this item is a move to strip Mayor Betsy's ability to place items on the agenda, which really strikes me in the core, because she was elected by myself and the majority of this community to put forth her agenda, to really imagine the vision that we have for this community and for our city. And, I think that this idea that Randy has put forth that we have to set the agenda after each meeting makes absolutely no sense. Otherwise, we would be on a merry-go-round of items on the agenda. Things come up, things have to be prioritized, the city manager works hard on that, and I appreciate that. And, the mayor, the duly-elected mayor, has to maintain their role of being able to prioritize and move the agenda of the citizens of this town. And without her ability to place items on the agenda, I don't see how she can represent our ideas. And, you know, I think that this resolution that they are putting forth, just sort of smacks of bipartisanship, and suggests that the council itself is exploiting the protocol in some way. And I think they should really look at that. And, I don't think a decision like this should be made so simply. Something like this might have to require a special election, you know, to change our city bylaws, our protocols. I certainly wouldn't want it to just be a simple majority of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinna.
Next, we have Carol Standell Castanon. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. You can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you for your devotion to the well-being of Ojai. My name is Carol Standell Castanon. I've lived in Ojai for nearly 30 years. My sense is that every new generation to Ojai has a vision as to what's best for this community, the community so many of us call home. One way to ensure the diversity of community voices are heard is through the ballot box. Ojai has chosen to elect a mayor, a two-year term. The mayor represents the majority of voices within the city limits. This voice crosses over city council districts. The current plan of the elected mayor, or two elected city council members setting the city council meeting agenda, reflects a balanced perspective or vision, as well as maintaining the power of the council. This organizational management during a time of complexity, urgency, and competing interests. Perhaps the council and the mayor are not always in agreement. It is the burden and responsibility of this local governmental organization to be respectful, equitable, follow the rules, wait, listen, and problem-solve, as are one of these basic tenets needing to be looked at more closely. What is the underlying issue of this body? It is the duty of this council to honor the majority voice, as well as articulate the precise dilemmas of consensus among the mayor, and council, and community. Discussions on how the agenda is set is represented at the ballot box. I support the elected mayor's position, or the position of two council, to set the agenda. I'm also interested in the transparency of our elected city officials. On the surface, this includes explicit conflicts of interest between the mayor or council, and decisions made on behalf of the citizens of Ojai. I urge the mayor and council to look more closely at public participation, and the inequities of accessibility to city council meetings. How many of our citizens have the opportunity to be informed and/or engaged? In the meantime, the will of the majority necessarily needs to be respected. Change and governing happen through facts, discussions, debates, and fair and accessible voting. I strongly support the current protocol for setting the agenda, one mayor and/or two council members at a time. Thank you for your service and your time tonight.
Thank you, Carol.
Next, we have Sue Williamson. Sue Williamson, if you're there, if you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's a hard act to follow. Carol was incredibly articulate, and I'd like to second everything she said. I do want to thank Randy, this is a little off-topic, but thank you, Randy, for your consideration about the homeless situation. I'd like to second everything you said, that was very considerate, and I'd like to see that discussed further. Meanwhile, about this issue, it just seems, I mean, Ryan said it himself, it seems like it's making it harder for everyone, this proposal. And I would agree with that. I really don't understand why you would want to limit people's ability to get things on the agenda. I certainly can understand your concern that you may not be as well-prepared, but I think Mr. Miley answered a lot of those issues by his suggestions in the process. But, I think that to change it now would actually, as Ryan said, make it more difficult for citizens to have input. And I think that in these times, we really need more input from citizens, and we should be making it easier rather than harder for them to get things on the agenda, for us to be able to voice our opinions. And yes, everybody might not have their act together perfectly, but, you know, things don't always have to be decided immediately, and there can be time for discussion, and I think that's what is needed more, is dialogue and conversation to work out these serious divisions that are clearly becoming very pronounced in our country, and also in Ojai. So, I would just like to say, I think things should stay the way they are to people, the mayor and one other person should be plenty to get an issue on, and support to be, have an agenda item. So, that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Next, we have Tom Francis. Tom, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and council members. As always, I really appreciate your service, and appreciate you being here tonight. So, I just, you know, there's an irony here that I just want to bring up, and that is that the placement of this agenda item on tonight's agenda by a council minority is that the presently existing protocol allowed council members Haney and Blatts to raise this question in a council meeting two times in less than a year. If what they were suggesting, if what they are suggesting were to have occurred, they would not be able to do this, what they've done tonight and what they did in January.
And April.
Secondly, if a majority of the council votes tonight to bring an end to a minority of the council, or the mayor's ability to place items on the council meeting agendas, members of the public with minority opinions may be left with no opportunity to cause the council to publicly discuss a matter of importance to them. Democracy is sometimes messy, but also delicate. I encourage the council to tread lightly. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep. Next, we have Patricia Pangeling. I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. If you're muted, please go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, there's a time lag, so excuse the time lag. I just want to second everything that several of the people before me have said. If the majority of the council tonight, or anytime, wants to change a longstanding protocol, that question should be taken to the voters, especially this one. And to institute a new protocol, it really needs to be voted on by the public to uphold a fair and democratic process. And I just want to let all of you know that I do appreciate what you're doing to take care of all the important projects and issues that we're facing now. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
And next, we have Wendy Lockwood. Wendy, if you're there, if you're muted, excuse me, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
I'm here, thank you, everyone. I just have been thinking that, as a reminder, each and every one of you were elected to represent the community, and each and every one of you should have the opportunity to speak for the community. And that includes adding items to council agendas. You're doing the work of the people. And, more than that, I would just like to say thank you for doing the hard stuff, you know, week after week, and night after night. But you are there to represent the people, each and every one of you had that job to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
And the last person we have is Tara Fay. Tara, if you're there, you can, if you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Tara. I'm here to support Mayor Betsy Sticks. I work for an organization that promotes youth leadership within our community, and Mayor Betsy Sticks has really helped to support these young activists by coming to different boot camp events over the course of the past couple months. She has really helped them all to really believe in their voice, and just the fact that they are truly supported by our community leaders. I really believe that Mayor Betsy Sticks is kind of the voice of the public, and I really, I don't want her voice to kind of be dampened by losing the opportunity to have that ability to, you know, bring up different ideas at these council meetings. And I really, I just, you know, everybody else that is here kind of put it so eloquently, but I just, I just really want to be here to support the idea that our mayor that was voted by the people in Ojai has that voice. So, yeah, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Tara. That's it, Gail?
Correct, no further public commenters.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Susan?
Oh, I just want to add, that in addition to the speakers we just heard, we had at least eight comments that were summarized as does not support revising city council protocols. I just wanted to mention that. And then, I'm not clear, I mean, most of what council member Randy Haney said, I also support about being civil and respectable, and there's bound to be a time when something happens at the last minute that would change our, that would make us, someone realize that we should postpone something. I don't feel like that was disruptive. I don't feel like that's enough, I mean, I can see why he might be unhappy about it, but I don't see that as a basis to change the protocol. You know, I mean, I agree that we should always be, make sure that we're already as prepared as we can be before we put something on the agenda. I did hear you make a lot of general comments, but I don't know specifically, there must be some data, you know, like, how much, what we're doing now, to me, seems like, oh, I, I mean, there's probably some merit in it, but what, how much time have we really spent on this? Mayor Sticks, do you have some idea?
I did some data, it's about 7% of the total meeting time, so approximately five hours was spent. I put two items on the agenda, one, both in January, request for goal-setting workshop, and a request to consider adding H.L. Ellison for the Clean Power Alliance Board. And then, there were eight items added by council members. 112, Randy and Ryan to review the city protocols. 112, Susan Bill to direct staff to dedicate Streets to Teramina. 39, Susan Bill to consider drone delivery regulations. 323, Susan Betsy to discuss safe speed limits. 323, Susan Betsy to review committees on City Hall campus. 325, Susan Betsy to consider an earth-friendly management policy. 622, Ryan and Susan to review and adjust requirements for outdoor dining program permits. 914, Randy and Ryan to review the city council protocols, that's again today. And then, there was one closed session added by Bill and Randy to review the city manager's review of city manager. So, that's five hours total approximately, at which totals to 7% of the total meeting time. And to me, all those topics were quite relevant, and, you know, they take a little more time when we have a lot of people calling in, which means that people are concerned about Any other comments?
Randy, are you getting ready to go? Randy, I had a couple of comments, but go ahead.
I have quite a few comments, but go ahead, Bill.
I think that you're kind of missing the point in some respects here. I think Bill Miley actually was pretty good at addressing the issue. And I also want to make it clear to members of the public that commented that council protocols are the council by majority vote deciding how it wants to conduct itself. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. So, the idea that, and I'm just going to challenge that idea, the idea that a council is going to put, you know, elements on the ballot about how it conducts itself is, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I just state that for the record. I think the issue is pretty much the way that Bill Miley outlined it. The city manager, and by extension, all the resources of the city manager, are managed by the council as a whole. And, that's just the form of government we have. And so, I think the issue has been moving beyond having matters put on the agenda to discuss versus bringing entire proposals to the council- to discuss versus bringing entire proposals to the council for action before there's been the proper, you know, unusual deliberation of do we want to spend staff time on this? How do we want to look at this? And I think that's the distinction that I think we've blurred the line with. I'm not sure how to address it because you want to have the ability to bring issues of concern. But in the past, frankly, the existing protocol has been used to bring issues of concern and then we discuss as a council how we want to move forward with addressing those concerns. And that's different from bringing an entire proposal to the council before we've even had a discussion about how we want to address the concern and how we want to involve staff time in looking into that. So I'm not sure how to articulate in terms of a change in the protocol, but when we say what our traditional approach has been, the traditional approach has been, since I've been on council, is that we all have the right through the existing protocols to bring an issue before us, you know, and then we discuss it as a group. How do we want to address this? What's the path forward for looking at this? And that's different from bringing an entire proposal for action, in effect displacing that prior step that was traditional. So I think that's just, that's the concern that I think that I'm hearing from council persons, Haney and Blatts, but I don't want to speak for them.
Randy and Susan?
So there's, you know, I'm not sure if, first of all, I'd like to thank the people for speaking. I mean, I'm not sure on the name, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, I think it was Carol Standall Scatton? I think she was the second or the third person who spoke. I really, first of all, I listened to all of them completely, but I was moved by her thought process and her thinking. So I'm not asking anything of anyone that I'm not asking of myself. We need to be clear on that. I'm not putting four people under my bus and putting me ahead of you. The same conditions I'm asking for you, I'm asking of myself, that we respect the agenda that is set. We value it. We value our time together. And we recognize that every time that we throw something in the middle of it, it impacts us. It impacts the community. Now, you may not think it does in that moment because someone has reached out to you or a group have reached out to you. Unless it's an emergency, unless it's life threatening, there's no reason it can't be brought to council and talked about and agreed upon by the majority that it's something we should add and move forward on. So I don't think that we're taking anything away from the public. I don't think we're taking anything away from any council person. I think what we're doing is, and my goal here is, is to make sure that when we meet, that we maximize the time that we're meeting and do take care of the business that's presented before us. Now, if I'm correct on some stats, I don't know why you brought them, but I just wanted to clarify, we're in September. I brought this forward in August. So how many meetings to date had we had? 18? James? Anyone quick at math? Two a month for nine months. And according to Mayor Sticks, we had nine insertions into those agendas. So half of the agendas had something or someone, and I'll own mine, thrown into the middle of it. And that's what I'm trying to say. We are limited in the time that we have here. It's 10:30. We haven't gotten to the most important, the most important issue that we should be talking about. And why? So blame it on me for bringing it up? Well, guess what? That's the protocols right now. It takes two of us. And two of us did it. And at the end of this discussion, we'll vote. And if we don't, if we don't move three to two either way, then that's the way it is and we move on. And I want to clarify something else, too. I don't think this, I've only done this twice. I think I've done this three times. Because in the seven years that I've been on council, I've seen this done multiple times. So Mayor, please, this is not about you. This is about how we perform as a group. You're one of five. I am one of five. So this is not personal. This is about business. And these protocols are about business, how we conduct ourselves. I just think it's important that we recognize that there is an importance to it. So however it goes, it goes. I'm just, I'm just tired. I'm tired. And I want to spend the time on the community's business. And when we set an agenda, we should set it and move on with it. And any agenda that doesn't include fire, that doesn't include earthquake, that doesn't include the general plan update, and doesn't include water is a failed agenda. And I don't care if that's on the agenda for the rest of my life on this city council. But every time that we don't talk about those three things, right now, we're letting this community down.
Susan?
So I want to be clear on what you're asking for, Councilmember Haney. You're asking, basically, you're asking to take away the elected mayor's ability to put an item on the agenda on his or her own. Is that correct?
And to council people. Let's not make this about one person. I'm putting the focus and the onus on all of us. We agree to an agenda and we agree not to impede it. It's not one, it's all.
Excuse me, but that, I really want this to be clear. You are asking three things, okay? You're asking that the elected mayor can no longer put an item on the agenda on her own. You're asking that all items on the agenda should be placed at the end of the meeting if three council members agree to it.
Majority.
Majority agree to it. And I want you to think seriously of the repercussions. First of all, the people elected the mayor with this, this is the, one of the, you know, you're basically reducing the role of the mayor back to a ceremonial role by doing that. Secondly, there are time sensitive issues that come up. So if we go with only putting things on the agenda, we can't address time sensitive issues that come up the next day or a week prior to the next agenda. And by asking for three, we are not allowed to discuss the item after the meeting. It has to be put on the agenda to be discussed. I don't object to what Bill Miley suggested and that council member, Mayor Potem, Wyrick agreed with. I think we could come up with a process if only two people put something on that, then they're allowed to explain why, why they want to put it on the agenda. I mean, I don't see any way, maybe the city, maybe the city attorney can help me out here. As far as I know, if perhaps somebody, a council member could put something on the agenda that the other, that three council members are not familiar with, but that they consider important, I do not see that we have abused the power to put something on the agenda. There has, I have to make sure my battery is plugged here. It's gonna, hang on, I don't want to get it plugged in. I see what you're recommending as very problematic. I see nothing but problems and it won't, I don't see that it can, it will resolve the issue because three council members might approve something and then come back with a full blown presentation. The other thing is this, even if the mayor, I believe that we should continue as it stands because the city manager discusses anything that the mayor wants to put on the agenda, that it's discussed with the city manager. If he doesn't feel that it's valid, or, you know, there'd be a discussion, she doesn't, she's, I don't see that the mayor has abused her power to put something on the agenda. If she has, then your concern would be valid. But there has been no abuse of that power that I've seen. And in fact, I don't think she's ever put something on her own. I believe that I, you know, somebody has seconded, but correct me if I'm wrong.
I put two things on it in January, to have a workshop and to have Michelle as the alternate. And it took 32 minutes total.
Very appropriate as mayor, you know, to ask for a workshop like that.
I'll just say, if everybody feels like, the public feels like this is some power grab to steal the power away from the mayor, I'll tell you, I'll just vote against it. But that's not going to change what I'm about to say. Mayor Sticks, I think your attitude and the way you've handled this tonight is completely inappropriate. I don't know what the accusatory tone is all about. If you go back and watch the video from January, I clearly had no intention nor an agenda about anything. I asked over and over again to Matt Summers exactly what other cities did in similar situations to get a better concept of it. If you watch that meeting, it would be crystal clear to you that that is not at all what occurred. In addition to that, I voted against it that night because I didn't think it was a good idea to not have some escape valve, as Matt called it in our meeting, because I was concerned that if we had to vote on it at one meeting and we had to wait until the next meeting to put something on the agenda, that that was too much time. So I voted against it, not because I thought we needed three people. Randy brought up that idea and it didn't get seconded. So I just, I don't understand where this conspiratorial attitude and tone that I think you've led with and some of the public has probably followed and whatever you guys thought was going on, but it's just 100% incorrect. I am media, I withdraw even worrying about this anymore. I couldn't care less. I thought it was a good idea to make us as a body stop looking like we were discussing the wrong thing over and over again in a public attitude that thinks we're not doing a very good job. I withdraw that. Clearly, the discussion about it's made us look even worse, which is not my intent at all. So I'm voting no. I have no intention of keeping any power out of the mayor's hands. And I don't think anything that you seem to insinuate about how I did anything in January is true at all.
Well, Ryan, I watched the video, so I encourage you to watch the video because it's right there. And two people put things on the agenda. Let me finish. I listened to you. Listen to me. Two people put on the agenda. It has to be two people. And it was you. And, you know, you're using the words tone and conspiracy. That's your perception. I'm not talking about any conspiracy. And from my perspective, my tone has been completely civil and respectful.
Go back and watch the video.
Yeah, please do. Please do. Because it couldn't have gotten on the agenda without both of you in December.
I don't, I don't believe I put it on the agenda and just, I can't even find it in the minutes anywhere I've been looking because I don't remember that at all. And frankly, if I did again, it has nothing to do with trying to usurp any power out of the mayor's seat. Like, stop with.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm just looking for the truth.
Protocols back has no, the idea that you're connecting, bringing protocols back to something to do with intending to do something to the mayor's seat is just completely.
Well, no, I'm not saying that. The proposal is to have three people do it, which means, you know, taking the power away from the mayor or two council members. So there's no.
Right, right, right. Go to your agenda.
Please stop interrupting.
Well, it's just not true.
Let's please have, let's have some stability. Two people put things on the agenda. You know, watch the video. It has to be two. Otherwise, it never would have gotten on the agenda. So please watch the video. And please don't assign tones and conspiracy to me when that's, that's your perception. I'm just looking for the truth and I want to support democracy. And I really feel, you know, I thought Michelle Ellison wrote a great letter in which she said that it's really important for the minority to be able to express a voice. That's, that's tenet of democracy. So I'm surprised that that's something that you're not supporting. Two council members.
Again, I just told you I'm not even going to vote for it. What do you think I'm not supporting? This, this idea that I'm somehow, I mean, I just don't understand where, again, you're doing it and then saying you're not doing it at all. It's very confusing. And I got to tell you, there was nothing in December, when you weren't even on the council, that anybody was putting on an agenda. And the idea of protocols is so expansive, that wasn't even the main focus of that particular agenda. In fact, the yay votes on that particular vote that night voted to keep the protocols the same. That was the, I voted against it because I didn't.
Bill and Susan and I voted to keep it the same way. You and Randy voted to change it.
No, I voted that I didn't like the idea that we had to vote at a council meeting in case we needed to have something done in between. And I discussed that in the meeting. That's why I just don't understand. I, again, I have no intent of usurping any of the power from you. That wasn't any of this. I've already told you I'm going to vote no. But I don't appreciate that it feels like you have had an accusatory tone. And if I don't bring that up, I think I wouldn't be doing my job.
Well, I'm sorry you think I have an accusatory tone. I don't, I don't think I do. And, you know, this is open for discussion. Randy?
Well, so we're getting into personalities and I keep saying this, this isn't about any individual. It's about a body and how we operate. If we keep the discussion at that level and on that, we'll come to some conclusions. We'll come to some answers. We'll come to some way to work this out. Again, no one's asking anyone, anyone to get any more power, if that's what this seems to be. No one is saying that no one in the community can't go to a council member and that council member can't bring their concern or issue to council. This doesn't stop that. Someone, if it does, someone tell me, because that's not the intent. We didn't say that. I didn't ask for that. I asked that when things are brought to council, that they're talked about in the chamber, they're fully vetted. We all agree that that's an important issue. We put it on the agenda. If it's not an important issue in that moment, it doesn't mean it won't be in two weeks or in two months. It means in that moment, it's not as important as what's in front of us. That's what it does. So that's what this is all about, contrary to what anyone thinks or feels or wants to think and feel. This is about how we function. Period.
Susan?
We cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. That's the bottom line. So I don't understand, what you're saying doesn't make any sense to me at all, Councilmember Haney. Because, and what is your logic for asking three, the majority to, why do you need three people? I mean, I would hope that if you want to put something on the agenda that I don't understand or that I may not think is important, I have enough respect for you to allow you to do that. I would trust that you would not abuse the privilege of putting something on the agenda. I'm perfectly fine with one other person seconded it. I do not see the need for three, for three people. I don't see how that will solve the problem. I, you know, there, and we can't, we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. We can only ask that they be put on the agenda.
We can't discuss them now if they're not agendized. You're, you're not making any sense. You can talk to any council member outside of the body about anything that any individual comes up to you and wants to talk about. You can't talk to three. If you bring it to council, alls I'm trying to say is, let the majority say that's something that we want to move forward. You, I'm not saying you can't share it with us. You'd have to share it with us in that moment.
But you are saying it can't be.
So alls I'm saying is, is to put it on the agenda and to move it forward, you need the majority of council. So I don't know what you're saying. Now, here's the opposite of what you're saying. Why don't we eliminate the two and put everyone having the opportunity at any time to put anything on the agenda?
Well, I think we should wrap.
Why don't we just do that? I'd be happy with that. It's an equal playing field. We're all elected officials. We're all voted on. No one's any better than the other. Let's simplify it.
Well, and yet, though, the elected mayor position comes with that. Well, and yet, though, the elected mayor position comes with that authority to put something on the agenda. So, and that's what the people voted for. So if you'd like to change that, I really do.
I don't know how many voters read the protocols before they voted. So. And I'm also going to assume, based on a lot of interactions with the past mayor and a little bit with you, that sometimes people think you have more power than what you have. You're a council member, a glorified council member with six things that are a little greater than us, and you get to do some things out in the public that we don't do. Although, you can choose not to go and ask one of us to represent you or represent the city. But alls I'm trying to say here is, I'm trying to create an environment where we, where we cut out repetition and we do the people's business. That's what this is all about. I'm ready to make a motion. Let's just get a vote on this and let's move on.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion if you're not ready.
So I'm going to follow the recommendation that the city council considered, their request, to placing items on council agenda with the majority of the body approving it at that session. Does that make sense? Do I need to, Matt, you need to help me out with that at all?
As I understand the motion, it would be to require that for items to be placed on the agenda by any member of council at a meeting at the future agenda items portion of the meeting. The request would be, one makes the request, requires consent by two more, three total, for an item to be placed on a council agenda. That's legal because all that would be discussed, if that were to happen, would be, shall the item be on the agenda or not? That's it. That's what makes it legal, because we would be listing future agenda items. And the motion is to direct staff to rewrite the protocols to that effect.
Thank you.
As I understand it.
I have a question. If I want to make an alternate motion, do I make it now or after, or we wait, we vote and see how that goes?
Procedure, next steps would be, first, is there a second? If the motion dies for lack of a second, so be it. If there is a second, then you could make a substitute or an amendment motion from there. But having viewed the meeting, it may be reasonable to see if there's a second.
So.
Nope. Okay. Susan, motion?
My motion is that we keep the city council protocols the same.
Give a second. Did I get a second?
Councilmember Haney, I do not believe you received a second.
Then this dies. Stays the same. Let's move on.
That is correct. There's no need to take a further vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Sticks, would you indulge me with just an inquiry?
Sure.
So do we still have an understanding among us and do we need to make it explicit, not tonight, that when an item is brought to the agenda on the way we just approved, no change, that there is the understanding that council has to meet to decide to utilize staff time before it proceeds? We all on that, that understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I agree, we can always do better. We can make it a better system. So let's work to do that.
But just the principle that we as a body of five manage the city manager and the city staff's time.
Yes. I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the last item, number four. It's the draft of the 2021-2029 Housing Element Update. And so we're going to receive public comments and provide comments, and this is the first of three meetings.
Yes, thank you. We have a, we have a brief, I will keep it brief. It was actually about twenty slides, but we'll try to get through them fairly quickly.
Real quick, real quick, point of order?
Yes.
It's, it's ten, looks like almost ten forty-five? And are we done at council at ten thirty?
Yeah, I would request, I know that that's our general procedure. I would request with the housing element and the looming state deadline, I think this is pretty critical to get through tonight.
You do it. All right, thanks, James.
So I will try to keep it brief. We're actually bringing the housing element to council today, actually a little bit ahead of schedule, which is nice under the circumstances. We're still working through some issues. We're still working through, in fact, earlier today, myself and the Community Development Director met with state representatives from the housing HCD, and we're still working through some issues. But we wanted to bring the housing element to council now, because it's a lengthy document, as you probably saw in your packet, it's about one hundred and eighty-seven pages. And we wanted to kind of get everybody to start thinking about it with the idea that we'll have a second review of it on September twenty-eighth and ultimately adoption on October twelfth. The housing element, per the state requirements, has to be adopted by October fifteenth. There is a quote-unquote grace period that they build into that, but we're aiming to try to get it adopted by October fifteenth to be in compliance, which would be an accomplishment because with COVID, with how long things take to get back from, from the state and other groups, I don't think many agencies are actually on track to hit that October fifteenth date. And so we'll give some more information on that in the presentation as well. But, but so, I will say, this is an early review. We're trying to get the information to the public and to the city council. We don't have to dig into it completely today, especially at this late point. And, but we, this will give the opportunity for council to either ask questions or to send us some comments or feedback in coming days. So with that, I'll kind of quickly go through the housing element. As a reminder, this is part of our general plan update. Our general plan update will update multiple elements in what we're calling our OHI 2045 Plan. The housing element is being talked about first because it is the one element that is required to be adopted by a certain date by the state. So that's why we had to, you know, kind of pull this out. I saw a public comment that came in today that, you know, asked why this is being handled separately and, you know, I noted that it's, it's kind of, I think the wording was something along the lines of like the cart before the horse. I think that the reality is, because of the way this is set up and because of the fact that the state has to certify it by October fifteenth, it is somewhat true that, you know, we're, we're kind of getting out in front of the rest of the general plan update, but it's, it's par for the course and it's, we'll have some opportunities as we adopt this and then we go to the general plan update, we'll have opportunities to still tweak and fine tune it during our general plan update. So with that, just a basic overview for someone who's watching who might not know what a housing element is. It's one of our seven required elements in our general plan. The housing element, one of the goals is that it should plan for the city obtaining its fair share of housing, which is, we have a slide coming up on this and a couple of slides explaining how the state determines the fair share of housing allocation for the region, the Southern California region, then how that is then sent out to the counties and then in each county, how there's a number sent out to the city. This housing element helps, is supposed to help us plan for meeting our fair share of those numbers. The housing element also includes a lot of data, a lot of information about the city's housing needs, about the population, about our, the community we serve, and how we can accommodate and address the needs of the community. It also sets goals, objectives, and policies for housing. One example that was in our last housing element that was, that we accomplished pretty well and that will also be in the upcoming one, is our accessory dwelling unit goals and objectives and policies. The city, through our last housing, housing element, set eighty use as a priority. And I think, hopefully, the community feels like we've accomplished treating those as a priority, and that's something that will probably be built into the next housing element as well. The housing element, I mentioned earlier, it's kind of being pulled out in front of the general plan update. That's because it is required to be updated eight, every eight years. And in some circumstances, if cities don't adopt them on time, it can be required to be updated every four years. So by being on pace for our October fifteenth adoption, we would avoid potentially going to a four-year cycle, which would be very frequent for a city of, in our circumstances, where things do not typically change drastically in four years. So, and then lastly, our deadline in Ventura County and in Southern California is October fifteenth. The state, we have to adopt it and then the state will have to review it and certify it. And so we've had a few comments that we've received during the process as well, when this has gone through Planning Commission and others. We had comments from people who said, you know, why are you so concerned with what the state is requiring? And the reason is because the state has to certify the housing element. And so, similar to the redistricting conversation we had earlier today, a lot of these come from the state down. Oh, you know, and it's, they are essentially one-size-fits-all solutions that are being kind of pushed to the cities. Obviously, OHI, we are not a one-size-fits-all city. I think we see that both with the redistricting and how that doesn't quite fit the community the way it may in a city like Los Angeles. Similarly, our housing element, our, the housing allocations and the housing needs doesn't really fit the city of OHI when we're a community that has actually had a decreasing population in the past, which is not typical in the state of California. And we'll, we'll get into a little bit of that. And I'll try to speed it up. I know it's, it's late. So just a couple other points. A lot of people believe that the map and the housing overlay sites are sites that the city will build housing in, but that's not actually the case. It's, it's sites that the city is planning for. The city does not typically build housing, although we have a couple of projects that we've identified that we may try to partner with groups to do so, but that's not required by the housing element. What the housing element requires is for the city to use our funds, policies, and/or programs to incentivize housing and for us to plan for housing. And the city sets the stage for developers by aligning the zoning ordinance, planning documents, and our general plan and housing element. So what, what happens if we don't certify it? Or, you know, what, why are we concerned with the state approving this plan? It's because there's potential penalties. First off, there's the risk of litigation. HCD, on behalf of the state, will monitor for noncompliance and will report cities to the Attorney General if they do not adopt and certify a housing element. Courts have imposed fines up to a hundred thousand dollars per month, and cities have been sued with Pleasant recently losing its ability to permit or regulate building. And so for us, those are definitely consequences that would not be beneficial for the city, especially if the city were to lose its right to, to permit or regulate building projects. So. And also, to a lesser extent, because we don't receive a lot of grant funding through these programs, but we also would become ineligible for state grant opportunities. Right now, we, we estimate we have a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in these state grant opportunities. So, so that really is not the critical piece for us. Again, this is where OHI is unique. Other cities that receive millions of dollars in these funds, you know, that might be the motivation. For us, it is more about maintaining our ability to zone and regulate and permit appropriately and, and those, those issues discussed above. So. So that's background on the housing element and why it's important and why we are working hard to stay in compliance with that. Now, the next question people may ask is what kind of information is in the housing element, which is the, we have an attached version in our packet, but it includes a variety of topics. One thing it includes is demographic information, and it's actually, it's interesting. I think, you know, it's a hundred eighty-seven pages. I think some parts of it, people would say are dry, but it's very interesting looking at some of the population trends and the income trends and homelessness trends. I think a lot of questions people ask us frequently are answered in this housing element based on the most recent 2020 data. And so we'll go over a couple of those pieces, but there's, there's a hundred and eighty-seven pages of this information in the packet. One point I made earlier, our population trends are explained in the, in the housing element. The, again, OHI is unique. Our population decreased between nineteen ninety to two thousand and twenty, which is very unusual. Whenever we meet with, like, new consultants on these projects, they always ask if that's a typo the first time around, because it's not typical in Southern California, but it's the case in OHI. The most recent projections are that there'd be expected growth of four and a half percent by 2045, which would actually put us just slightly above the population we had in two thousand. So still not the typical growth seen in Southern California cities. And so that information is included, that type of information, because obviously, one of the questions is, how many more people are we expecting in the city that we would need to have housing identified for? And so, again, OHI has a little bit of a unique story with that. And I would say, unique in most of these areas, actually, another area that OHI is unique in is our, the number of households in OHI that are senior-headed households. We definitely have the oldest population in the county. I want to say our average age of OHI residents at this point, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was fifty-three years old, which, and I believe Oxnard by comparison was thirty-five, so a pretty big difference. Forty percent of our households are headed by seniors. Twenty percent of our households are seniors who are living alone. Those are all much higher numbers than, than you'd expect in, in most cities. Additional, some additional categories that we look at and discuss in the housing element. Our homeless number has increased somewhat, I believe, from forty last cycle to forty-nine, or forty last year to forty-nine this year. And so we have point six of our population is, is homeless per the housing element. We also have a pretty high percentage of small households. We show that here in the inverse, that our large households of five or more account for only four point seven percent of our households. Most of our households are two to three people. And again, those are all kind of areas where we're unique versus ours compared to cities like Oxnard or Ventura, where it's typically younger, larger households than what we're seeing in OHI. Another thing that I would say actually surprised us, or surprised me, I'll say, I think my perception has always been, in my mind, that OHI is more owner-occupied houses than the rest of the county. But when we looked at that more closely, we found that that's not true, according to our statistics. OHI, in our most recent reporting, is forty-seven percent renter-occupied households, fifty-three percent owner-occupied, versus Ventura County is actually sixty-three percent owner-occupied and thirty-seven percent renter-occupied. We're closer to the state average, the state norm. We still have a little bit more of a renter-occupied background than, than the state, but it's close. But we are much more renter-occupied than the county, the remainder of the, of the county of Ventura. And, and that number is actually decreasing from, the, the number of owner-occupied housing units has actually been decreasing since 2010. Another, I mentioned this earlier, the age of households and, I'm sorry, the age of, this is a little different, it's the age of our housing stock. And that's another category that, well, it's a category where we actually are comparable to the county, but I think this would not surprise most people to see that we don't have much new development. New housing units built since 2010 is point one percent, less than one percent. Uh, whereas number of housing units from nineteen thirty nine or earlier is over ten percent. Uh, and um you could see a a big chunk of our housing uh structures were built in the fifties, sixties and seventies. I think that uh is not as surprising and it speaks to, you know, we have a lot of um landmark uh housing uh structures and uh and we don't have a lot of new development. So that's not uh necessarily surprising. Um, but it it just um speaks to the 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 fact that we mentioned earlier that there is not a lot of new development in Ojai, and that's where uh again, uh this uh the Rena alloc- allocations don't necessarily um jive with what we expect from the city moving forward. So. So um uh with that, um, there's a couple more kind of demographic uh pieces of information. Uh, another area that I think was um that has been referenced by the City Council previously when we talk about the need for affordable housing and that Ojai has one of the lowest um household incomes in the county. Uh, we we uh did uh the the housing housing element reflects that. Um, we show that fifteen percent of Ojai households would be considered extremely low income uh as compared to eleven and a half percent in the county. Uh, our very low is almost equal with the county, just a a little bit higher, eleven point eight percent versus eleven point seven percent. And then um low and moderate are are close to the county levels, but overall, we have um forty percent of the households in Ojai would be considered um low income uh households, uh although that ranges between extremely low to the moderate or above category. Um, or I'm sorry, the uh extremely low to the low category. Uh, we do have a a pretty high percentage or a higher percentage than the rest of the county of those um of the extremely low category. So. Um, regarding housing affordability, uh, so we just went over the fact that our income uh levels per household are that we have a high percentage of extremely low. That's particularly challenging because what we found is that Ojai also has the highest median home sales price in the county at nine hundred and thirty four thousand five hundred dollars as of October of twenty twenty. And so uh you can start to see quickly where the challenges are when we say that we have uh one of the largest numbers in the county of extremely low income. But then we have the highest sales price of housing in the county, and you can understand quickly why um or how uh we get some of the numbers in the housing element related to stressed households and and households that um uh pay more than a certain percentage of their uh income towards housing. That's something that's particularly challenging in Ojai. Uh, the the bullet point here on this slide notes that housing is considered affordable if a household pays less than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. Uh, what we are finding in Ojai is that Ojai is one of the cities that that has the um uh fewest amount of households that would be considered affordable for the income level that that it um that the uh residents uh obtain. And so this gives some more information. Uh, when we talked about fifteen percent of our uh households being the extremely low category, uh, the income limit for a ex- extremely low um housing, I believe this is a two uh two person household, is uh the income limit is twenty seven thousand one hundred dollars. So a family of two, uh, you know, whether it's a a husband and wife or a uh father, uh, son, or, you know, whatever the combination is. Um, a two person household making twenty seven thousand one hundred or less would be considered extremely low income. And so uh when we tried to estimate what rent can be afforded for some for fifteen percent of our community, the rent that uh would be affordable would be five hundred dollars per month. I think all of us know immediately that there is uh, it's very hard to find any rent in that price range. Um, I don't remember the last time I saw a rent advertised at five hundred dollars a month. And so that speaks to the fact that for those people making under twenty seven thousand one hundred, there probably is no affordable rent in Ojai in those categories at this point. Um, to purchase a house, what what would be considered an affordable home price to purchase at that income level is seventy thousand dollars. Uh, there, again, I cannot remember the last time I saw any property in in the Ojai Valley for under that amount. So you start to see quickly where the um stress level comes from on these. Uh, similarly, for very low income, a household of two, they you can make forty five thousand dollars uh and still be considered very low income if you're a fa- a household of two. The affordable rent for that category would be nine hundred and fifty dollars, and an affordable housing price for that category is a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Both of those numbers are still well below the average. Uh, and then uh for low uh income, a household of two is up to seventy two thousand dollars. For moderate income, a household of two is up to ninety three thousand nine hundred dollars. And I think, again, for that category, it's worth noting, a household of two that's making ninety three thousand nine hundred dollars, uh, an affordable home price for that uh for those two people would be considered three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, our median sale price a year ago was nine hundred thirty four thousand dollars. So you can see uh where the gaps are um pretty clearly, again, with our community having a um a lower income level as compared to the rest of the county, but a much higher sales price as compared to the rest of the county. And so all that information and a lot more, I'm trying to kind of unpack it quickly, but um, a lot of additional information is in the housing element. Uh, it's worth reading to kind of see those trends and understand it. I think I would say that I think we all kind of have an idea of these trends, but it really puts it clear in black and white and amplifies just um how um how difficult it is right now to find housing for um that's affordable for for most of our uh communities. So. So with that in mind, um, we get what is called a regional housing needs assessment allocation, and that's what we mean when we refer to RAINA numbers. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, um, the way it works is the state designates a number to the Southern California region, which is this total SCAG number. Uh, so Southern California as a region got one or was asked to identify one million three hundred forty one thousand eight hundred twenty seven possible housing units um that would need to be planned for as part of this housing element. Of that one million three hundred forty one thousand, twenty four thousand were uh sent or were uh allocated to Ventura County, which you could see on this chart is actually one of the lower uh numbers sent to a county. And then of those twenty four thousand in Ventura County, um, those were then allocated to cities with Ojai receiving fifty three of those units. Uh, we participated uh in the City Council um directed staff and authorized staff to participate in all of the hearings um to try to get a realistic number for Ojai. Uh, and so as a result of that, um, the number for Ojai was fifty three housing units. And so um obviously, uh, the it ranges pretty greatly. You see that Ojai has fifty three units. You see that Oxnard has eight thousand five hundred and forty nine. So Oxnard is going to have to plan for potentially adding eight thousand five hundred and forty nine housing units. And so where we receive the lowest allocation and Oxnard receive the highest, but that gives you an example of the range uh from city to city. Um, importantly for us, uh, when you compare the allocation to the last cycle, which is coming to an end, the fifth cycle, uh, our number was reduced pretty dramatically. We had three hundred and seventy one housing units allocated to us in the fifth cycle, which is was difficult to plan for. I think we've all heard the stories when this went through um the process the last time, and the city had to find sites that uh really um were very unlikely to be developed, but it was just because uh in a city four square miles that's pretty built out, it's hard to identify three hundred seventy one new new units. Uh, this current allocation, the six cycles allocation of fifty three units is much more realistic and much more in line with, I think, what we would actually expect to see. And so uh those fifty three units, uh, the state would um uh are is uh identifying that thirteen of those units would be very low income units. Nine would be low, ten would be moderate, and twenty one would be above moderate. I think those numbers are actually fairly obtainable for us. Um, particularly when we've seen, uh, we've been seeing um uh m- many uh ADU units through our second unit compliance program and our and some of our other ADU uh uh permitting uh programs. Uh, I I believe in our housing element, we estimated that we would expect to see another sixty in the next uh eight years, sixty plus. So we potentially could uh reach our housing needs number with um with only ADUs if if um if needed. So. Uh, actually, I should have gone to the slide a minute ago. So this shows that over the last three years, we've had sixty five ADUs. Um, uh, ADUs, junior ADUs are legalized units. And so those um, if we continue at that rate, we would hit our uh fifty three units uh pretty easily during this eight year period. Uh, one of the other things that's included in the housing element that is a hot topic and that is typically the focus of a lot of the discussion is uh what's referred to as the SPL overlay. The SPL overlay is the site map that shows particular sites that the city has identified for affordable housing. Uh, and um, those are the sites that we have to base, we have to identify uh a minimum number of units for, which again, in the past was three hundred fifty. Uh, this cycle will only be fifty three units. When we identify those sites, those property owners receive an entitlement uh to potentially build more dense uh affordable housing. Uh, and so it's uh the positive is that it encourages affordable housing. The uh negative and the reason you don't just identify every site within the city as as a um SPL overlay is because uh the city loses some of the ability to review and and regulate those sites. So you typically only want to put the SPL overlay on sites where you really want to encourage affordable housing uh at all costs, essentially. And so um the city's uh current allocation, as I mentioned, is fifty three units. We mentioned in the staff report that uh when this first started going through the process, the the rumor was uh what we had heard from other cities who had heard back from the state was that they were requesting a huge buffer, uh, up to eight times the allocation. So there were, for example, with our fifty three units, this it would have been similar to the state requiring four hundred units as a buffer, which is pretty unusual and um and we were uh hoping was not the case. So we've been working with the state. We've been working with our consultants to try to to find out what the state will really accept as a buffer in our um upcoming uh housing element. And so we have heard uh recently that the state has been accepting a more reasonable thirty percent buffer, which essentially means for us to satisfy our requirements and get the state certification, we should plan to have at least about um sixty nine units of um of housing identified on our SPL overlay. And so um because of that process, we worked with the Planning Commission to identify a bunch of sites in case we needed to add a couple hundred units. Um, but the positive news is because uh the state has come back with a more reasonable thirty percent buffer, our current sites uh which are currently estimated at units for ninety five to a hundred thirty six units, uh, those that current uh allocation would already satisfy our um RAINA requirements. And so what that means, I know that that's starting to get technical, but um what that means is laid out here. Uh, this map shows the existing sites from our last housing element that is coming to an end, the fifth cycle, which ends uh October fifteenth. These sites are the ones that are currently designated. Um, the two in red, four oh eight South Ventura Street and one eleven West Santa Ana Street are the City Hall campus. And so we've identified those in red because we recommended and worked with the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission affirmed that and also recommended removing those two sites from the overlay. Uh, there's a variety of reasons, but one reason is just that it's typically, if there's no plan to actually build and develop affordable housing on a site, it should, you shouldn't just add the site um because the state will, the state wants to know that the sites you're identifying will have a legitimate opportunity to be developed. Uh, I think what we're seeing right now with all of our with our um uh Stewart Canyon restoration, the cl- potential climate park, um, uh, some of the other programming, some of which we talked about tonight, like the Children's Memorial. Uh, there's uh it is not realistic at this point that these sites will be developed in eight years. And so we are recommending removing those. Uh, but that leaves the sites that are in white. Uh, those are on the current housing element, and we are recommending keeping them on the next housing element uh on the next SPL overlay. Um, those sites include some some notable sites. Four oh eight uh North Montgomery is the city site that we've talked about potentially having a uh uh five unit or so affordable housing project at different times. Um, and we're 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 currently working on that. Um, uh, twelve oh two East Ojai Avenue is the old bowling alley site. Three eighteen Bryant Street is the Condor Storage Site on Bryant uh Bryant Street. Uh, five ten and four fifty East Ojai Avenue is the uh the um uh skate park is four fifty, which it's the skate park in front, but it's got a large parcel behind it. So that's still potentially could be uh developed for affordable housing uh with the focus on that that back part, not on the the skate park, which we have a twenty year lease on. Uh, but it's that that parcel and the parcel next to it, which is the old um Foundry Building, the old Miller Building uh that uh is just the um the the building with nothing else on the parcel. That's also on our overlay, and we're recommending to keep it on the overlay. And then um three twelve uh South uh Blanch Street is on the overlay as well, and we're just recommending keeping that on the overlay at this point. So. Um, actually, I think we're recommending removing that. Let me, I'll confirm that, but I think that one's actually being re- recommended removed too. So. We just uh forgot to mark it in red. Um, so uh I mentioned this earlier, but we just wanted to to dig in a little bit to it. So when we went to Planning Commission, we asked them to be prepared and to to do some of the legwork on uh identifying additional sites if additional units were needed. And at that time, we thought that additional units would be needed. So they did do a a review and they identified additional sites, which are shown on this map. Um, again, uh, at this point, with us getting the further clarification from the state, uh, we are not, uh, the staff is not recommending adding uh sites for a variety of reasons at this point. Um, but uh this information is included in the packet and um and it's available if we need to identify additional sites, but we just don't think we do at this point. And so what we are recommending is, uh, again, to go back to that slide before, we are recommending removing the City Hall sites, which there really are no plans to develop. And we're recommending keeping the existing sites, which puts us at about a hundred units, uh, depending on how that's calculated, which is more than we need per the state's um RAINA requirements. Um, and so I, this will probably be the focus of of most conversation. Um, but we wanted to just briefly note another useful um uh or another key piece of information in the housing element are the programs that the city is uh implementing to help encourage affordable. are the programs that the city is implementing to help encourage affordable housing. There's 18 of them, I won't go through all of them, but you know, certain key ones have been pretty effective. And in our meeting with the state, we bragged about a couple of them, such as increasing the supply of accessory dwelling units, which has added more units than we've ever been able to add in Ojai. So that's been very successful. I think the other one I want to point out is one that the planning commission actually proposed to be added as a new, new program, is a program to demonstrate alternative housing materials, which is something that's been talked about a lot at different planning commission meetings throughout the years. And so that was a new program. Most of the other programs listed here are existing programs, but we just wanted to, to call them out because they are key parts of our housing element and us showing that we really are trying to encourage affordable housing. And so there's approximately 18 with, like I mentioned, the one demonstrating alternative building materials would be the, the new program that the planning commission's recommended. Another key one that I'm sure we'll receive comments on is the sustainability and energy conservation. We've added some language to that, pointing out that by conserving energy, you're also keeping prices low for utilities, which helps address affordability. So things like that do tie into affordable housing, so.
Did you already do number 16? Did I miss it?
No, I, I wasn't going through these one by one, but we can talk about ones if there's questions on them. The anti-displacement policies is essentially the, it's our policies that are in our city code that require like the like-for-like housing and those types of things. And so that's what that program is referring to. It's, it's, it's items embedded in our city code and in our policies that help prevent displacement, so.
Yes, Susan, remember that's the ordinance we, we utilized when the cottages of Mallory came up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
Very good.
So those are the programs that are included. There's 18 of them in our housing element at this point. We are talking to HCD and we talked to them today and they're supposed to give us a response about whether, again, whether they have updated their position on whether tiny homes would count towards ADUs and, and our RENA numbers. And if that does, then that would be a potential program that could be added if, if we move forward with the tiny home programs. And so again, I know it's late, I know that's dumping a lot of information, but again, the good news is we're actually here a meeting earlier than, than we would need to be. And where our goal is to kind of give the information, get everybody start thinking about it. If you get any, if you have any thoughts or comments or feedback, you can provide those to us either now or between now and the next meeting. And then our next steps for this process is that we met with HCD from the state this morning, but they are going to give us written, written comments on Friday, by end of day Friday. So we are going to continue our review of the housing element on, at our next council meeting on the 28th, and that will also include the ability for us to then review what the state has commented on. And then the plan will still be to adopt the housing element on October 12th at that council meeting with whatever feedback we receive from, from the council, public and from the, the state. That would be three days prior to the state deadline of October 15th. As I mentioned, there is a 120-day grace period, but we're trying to adopt it by the 15th, and I think we are actually in a pretty good position to be able to do that. And then, and so if anybody, if any council member wants to provide feedback that could be included before the next, or for the next discussion on September 28th, we would, because of the timeline, we would need to have that fairly quickly by about the end of this week to, to be able to put it into the next package. But again, we still have that October 12th review as well, so it's not, it's, it's not, it's not the last opportunity at this point. And so what we are going to be recommending when we come back on this is that we are going to recommend adopting the housing element with the existing sites, which should meet the state requirements by the deadline. And if council has any interest in really exploring any additional sites, then what we, what we do is we adopt the existing sites, but we would note to the state that we were going to do the environmental review and, and an update to this as part of our general plan update to, to include additional sites if, if desired, so. So that's the plan at this point. I know I probably talked too long, but this is just to kind of get everybody's will spinning and we'll take any feedback and if, or we can come back and talk about it more in depth on September 28th, so.
But we are anyway, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Any questions, Bill?
A quick comment. I really think it's important in interacting with HCD to point out that what we're talking about is expanding the definition of ADU. We're not adding a new category of housing. We're trying to expand the flexibility of ADUs with, with tiny homes in a, in the, in the two-step process with the permitting for the site and, and the, the actual house itself. And that that goes, and, and I want to emphasize that that goes along with the theme that we've been doing for years, and that is going beyond the necessary in terms of allowing for ADUs and trying to get, make it easier to, under the compliance program, to get ADUs that weren't built with permits permitted. When I read through this, you know, on page, on a couple pages, like on 67, where they talk about the ADUs, it, it almost acts like, just to read really quick, the city last updated its ADU ordinance in 2020 reflects several state law changes. You know, we, our initiative on ADUs has not just been reactive, and it, it kind of comes across as just being reactive. We've been more proactive than that, and I, I just would want, not want to sell us short on what we've been doing. Just a comment.
Randy?
Just a couple of questions, Mary. So first of all, James, you said that we have about 59 or 60 ADUs built in three years?
We have, your microphone, I think, is off. I think I heard the question.
59 or 60 ADUs in the last three years?
63 in the last three years, I believe.
And do we know what people are charging rent for them if they're for rent?
I was trying to think of if there's a way we could find that out. I know I've heard here and there when, when we've talked to some property owners, I don't think we know like firm, you know, what, what each of them are charging.
So in regards to RENA numbers, we don't know what, what they're actually impacting. Is it low? Is it medium? Is it high?
ADUs get to count as moderate by default.
They count as moderate.
We counted them against the moderate metric. If we had an ADU that was de-restricted to be cheaper or more affordable at lower or very low, then we would so count it, but we get to count ADUs by default of moderate.
By design, they're deemed moderate by design, right?
And that's probably, that's probably pretty accurate.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's probably accurate as well, because if you recall, as we mentioned, moderate means estimated rent of $2,200. And you know, I think most, most of us have probably seen some of the ADU ads lately that are, you know, 1,800, $2,000, so they are in that range, so.
So I, I guess what I'm leading to is, as it stands right now, any of the housing stock that, that is built, unless there's some type of restriction or, or something of that nature placed on it, there is no control. That's, that's the first thought. The second one is on the SPLs. When we designate a property, especially private property, do we send them a letter stating what we're doing? Are we required to do that?
We're sending a letter.
We're all required to.
And if, and if they receive it and don't want to be on it, do they have a right to not be on it?
No, they do not have a right to object. The city has a right to zone these properties as the council may desire. I believe that staff has been in discussion with most, if not all, of the property owners.
And that's when I'm going to turn it back to James regarding those discussions.
Yes, we've notified each person, each person who's been, each property that was identified, whether we ended up recommending it or not on here, we, we've notified that they potentially could be added to the site.
And I, and I guess why I asked that question is, again, I've had people in the C1 area being asked to be put on this overlay, and I was just wondering why we would even overlay something in the commercial district, but that's another question.
Yeah, I want to say our existing sites has one that's a C1, I believe, which I believe is the bowling alley. And so that would be the one, again, I know the planning commission looked at a bunch of different sites, and I think one or two of those was also commercial, but with, with our recommendation at this point, the, the bowling alley would be the one that would stand out as a commercial.
Thanks, James.
510 East Ojai may also be commercially zoned.
I believe it's PL, but we could confirm that.
Oh, is that PL too? Okay.
So.
Other questions? Susan, question?
So the 47% is renters, 53% owner occupied, and that 53% includes second and third homes that are hardly ever occupied, correct?
Yes. The only thing I'm not sure of, it's, that we can find out and we can report back on at the next meeting, if they identify as, if they have a second home in Ojai and they identify as living in their first home, I'm not sure if they're counted as owner, in the owner occupied category. So that'd be something we'd have to look at a little closer.
Yeah, curious about that, because if there's enough of them, we can, you know, possibly discuss that tax for.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring that back at the, is, is, report back on the 28th.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comments on this item, Gail?
Yes, we have two speakers. The first one is Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, you are, you can speak now if you're unmuted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk.
I am still here.
I can't believe it.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley, and I'm one of those older folks you talk about. So I've read the entire draft, have a few comments. Number one is appreciation. This is a huge undertaking, and I know it represents massive amounts of time, energy, and thought by many, planning department, commission, consultant, the public, the council. So I want to recognize your contributions and applaud all of you, including me. Senior needs. It seems that our city has a much higher age population than others and will be needing much more affordable residents in the future. The need for units is greater than the supply. Number three, the number of SPL overlays, affordable housing. I've been attending planning commissions ever since this started, and I have been aware of the current draft sites recommended to meet the regional housing requirements. After reading about the recent state communication provided by our housing consultant that only 30% of overdest is, only 30% is needed, I want to support James and Lucas in their recommendation not to add the five proposed sites, because we're okay. The accounting, the recommendation, the planning commission was used, they were using an older designation for guidelines. Number four, protect the future zoning, protect future limited water supplies. When you have a SPL overlay, it's a by right, by law, and it, you carry it forever. We don't need all of those, especially considering that we want to protect our water supplies in the future. With the western drought growing every year, we need to be cautious about by right assignments. Who knows? They may, if we don't do it, we may save our having to have the wells go dry and the lake go dry. Number five, I'm going to skip. Number six, alternate housing material demonstration. Brand new, this is a great chance to look at alternate construction materials. We should take advantage of it. And last, conservation and rehab. This section addresses the need for keeping what we have in affordable, livable. It's, in my opinion, a major need is weatherization. Requirements for wall insulation didn't happen until about the 1960s, so we have a lot of older homes. Habitat for Humanity, in addition to building homes, does rehabbing. I'd like our city to actively connect with Habitat to make some of our more affordable homes more efficient, energy efficient. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we have Steve Colome. Mr. Colome, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk. He's, he's in the queue, but he doesn't seem to be, be picking up.
Maybe Steve went to bed.
He, he could have.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go ahead and put him back, remove him from the permission.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Let's wind it up.
Okay, moving on to discussion.
I say we discuss next time.
I, I know that there's one more person who signed up, Tom Francis, do you see him, Gail?
He's still in the queue, he's not signed up for this item, but I can open him up to talk if he wants to speak. There, whoops, where'd he go? He disappeared. He's no longer, oh, there he is.
Get into the thing, Gail.
Tom Francis, if you're there, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and you can speak.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I did sign up to speak, I'm not sure what happened. Anyway, again, I appreciate you all being here, especially so late. My comments are fairly brief, so it mostly relates to water. Relative to most centuries, the 20th century was a very wet century. Sadly, most of the water supply systems in our valley were engineered during this wet period. In our valley and throughout the western United States, we're not just experiencing severe extended drought, we're also experiencing aridification, which is the gradual change of a region from a wetter to a drier climate. These facts render our present water supply system, which was predicated on this wet century, unreliable for most or all of the coming RENA eight-year cycle. As former Mayor Johnny Johnston says, "If you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." Councilmember Wirick, in the context of water supply in the Ojai Valley, this means stop approving new water wells, even when it is for your friends or for a development you really want to make happen. New water wells do not generate more water, they simply further reduce the amount of water we'll be relying on to survive aridification. Per their 2020 Urban Management Plan, the Casitas Municipal Water District, which supplies most of the water to the city of Ojai, is projecting we could reach stage five restrictions by 2023, where watering outdoors would be severely limited, and stage six restrictions by 2026. They do not discuss stage seven, if there is such a thing. I respectfully request that the city council direct the city manager to formally request that the California Department of Housing and Community Development grant the city of Ojai a waiver of any and all RENA requirements. grant the city of Ojai a waiver of any and all RENA requirements as soon as possible due to lack of critical infrastructure, i.e. a reliable water supply. In our present circumstances, planning for more development flies in the face of the geophysical limits our planet is communicating to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we'll move to discussion.
Yeah, Mayor Sticks, just in response, just as a matter of fact, I have no idea what Mr. Francis talked about in terms of my approving on the OBGMA board, wells supporting development. I have no idea what he's talking about.
I was at that meeting. There were two wells approved. The Little Hawk Well and some other well recently on OBGMA. I think that might be it.
They had nothing to do with development. They were bedrock wells that were for people, for their, you know, their individual domestic use. They weren't part of development in any way.
Any other comments? You guys okay? Well, I, one, James, thank you for that great report. And I really appreciate you explaining that, you know, because I think most of us have, when we hear affordable, we think it's actually affordable for people, and that, that word is, doesn't really mean much anymore. So in terms of very low and extremely low income, I think you taught us well that, you know, we just don't have that available at this point, so I appreciate that. And I would like to make a motion. I would move that the city council direct the city manager to formally request that the California Department of Housing and Community Development grant the city of Ojai a waiver of any and all RENA requirements as possible due to lack of critical infrastructure. And Randy, to reiterate, water, you know, we need to talk about water, water all the time. So we don't have a reliable water source at this point. So that would be my motion.
No, I feel like I'm, I'm just too tired to think clearly. Could we, could we put that, could we come back to that next time?
Yeah, is that possible, Matt and James?
Yeah, it could certainly be. It's a good idea, because I think we can, in our report, when we come back on the 28, we can look into, I don't know offhand if the state's ever done that. That's the first question. So, and Matt might already know.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that very briefly. Obviously, it's very briefly. To my knowledge, the state has never approved a waiver on the basis of, from RENA requirements on the basis of infrastructure. Certainly, we can confirm if that's possible, or more accurately, if it's ever happened, and bring that information forward next time. My recommendation would be to pursue it on a dual track. In case it fails, were that to be the wish of the council to make the request, so too make the approval of the element. That way, if it fails, we aren't caught in a period where we don't have a compliant element and run the risk of developers forcing approval of projects we won't want and losing state grant funding. But there's, there's no harm in making the request. Certainly, and staff, James and I and the consultants will evaluate in more than 10 minutes to figure out if there's any legs in our assessment.
Thank you, because of course, it's a unique time here. We've never had so little water, and never say never, right? Bill?
Mayor, Mr. Sticks. First of all, to say we've never had so little water is, are you talking about the entire western United States or the Ojai Valley?
I'm saying we're in an extreme drought right now.
But are you talking about the western United States? Are you talking about the Ojai Valley? We've never had less water than we have now.
We have very little water, you know.
Oh, no, you made a specific statement. We've never had less water than we have now. That is not, that is not a factual statement with respect to the Ojai Valley.
Okay, we have very little water right now.
That's a little different. Okay, a little different. I think it's important that we stay with facts, because the other point I want to make, what we have to be careful of is traditionally, people that are opposed to expanding affordable housing have used resource constraints as a way of opposing it without being explicitly clear as to what they're, what they're really doing. So we have to be careful about that, in my opinion. So I'm, I don't want to make any inquiries until we've thoroughly discussed this. I don't want to make any inquiries on behalf of the city until we thoroughly discuss the implications and exactly what we're asking for. So I think that's clear. We're, we're only vetting internally at this point.
Yeah, we're just saying if it's been done before, if there's any, if there's any basis or any way that, that anybody's done it. I would agree. I would say, from our conversation with the state, I will say that a lot of the conversation was them making sure that the city, and, and I don't think it's just us, but making sure that the city really is going to try to do its fair share, you know. And I think a lot of our conversation was, look at our ADU numbers. Look at what the city's done proactively on this. And they actually said a couple of times that they were reassured based on that discussion. So I, I do think if we just sent them an email and said, can we, you know, can we essentially get a waiver, I think that there's a chance, it would put the magnifying glass on us as well. So we would really dig into it and report back on the 28.
Randy?
Just quickly, it's, that's the, that's the dilemma is, and it's not about water versus development. You know, every ADU is using more water. It's that simple. So every time we try to tackle one challenge, we're going to face some issues on the other side of it. So I think everything has to be looked at, you know, piece by piece and project by project and house by house and ADU by ADU. It's, it's not as simple as it sounds. While I'm in agreement that we're definitely challenged for water, we're also challenged for low-income housing. So somewhere in there, we've got to come to some realization as to what's the priority for this community and balance it. And that's what we're elected for, to have those discussions and to have those interactions and to, to create that environment. So I look forward to it.
Any other comments? Okay, so do we need a motion here or?
It's returning on September 28 already, so, you know, we'll just, we'll bring it back. And if anybody does want to submit any questions or comments to us, you can do so, and we'll, we'll try to make sure to, to look at all those as well.
Wasn't this filed and received?
Yeah.
You can submit comments, right?
Yes.
I can do that.
Yep.
And there was also like an 18-month process with SCAG and all these other organizations that had comment periods. And City of Ojai never brought any of this up or asked to opt out for any of the plethora of opportunities it would have. So this process, this isn't something that happens lightly. They have to redevelop an entire mechanism for how they count all this stuff. It goes through multiple committees. Just want to say, the opportunity, if the city wanted to opt out of this, if you pay attention, was a long time ago.
Randy?
Mayor, just one, one last thought on that, too, is that I forgot to bring it up. There's a major lawsuit by the Orange County against SCAG about their rain and numbers. And, and that's still being played out. I don't know how that's going to impact the rest of Southern California. But they're not happy with, with what was given them. So Matt, is that something that we should think about, be aware of, or just be updated on?
Just be updated on the Orange County lawsuit. Because our number is so, so small relative to the 1.4 million units across SCAG, that it's unlikely to have any significant effect on our 53-unit allocation. So we're aware of it. We're monitoring it. And they have a somewhat limited chance of success. Nonetheless, if they win, they win. And if they do win, that will reallocate the numbers across the rest of SCAG. But we wouldn't expect a significant increase, again, given that percentage, 53 out of, out of 1.4 million. And as noted by Mr. Vega earlier, the city did secure a significantly reduced number through participating in that 18-month-long process. Not zero, but significantly reduced by a factor of, what, seven from the prior number.
I agree with you, Matt, but at any point in that process, did the city ever object to having any number whatsoever due to water shortages or other resource, infrastructure lacking or anything like that? No, it argued a reduced number for a bunch of different reasons, but not that. And it's just that, I mean, we were talking about this earlier. We're sending the staff on an opportunity to go ask these agencies on how to opt out of this, which I think anybody who's actually been involved in this and been on VCOG and dealt with SCAG and been to the meetings, that there's no chance they're going to let us opt out of it. They've reduced our number substantially, because at the time, we could reduce it. We went through a process to do that. We got it reduced sevenfold. We should be happy with it. I don't know why we'd go back and complain about it now. It's going to send the wrong message. We got a huge W in the column for getting that number reduced down to where it is. Now we want to take another bite at the apple way after it was already decided? Just sounds like, sounds like we're wasting time, which is kind of the issue I brought up before. And I don't even think we voted on it. It feels like this just got unilaterally pushed through. And my vote is that, no, you guys shouldn't waste your time asking to get it reduced to zero. I know it's not going to happen. I've been, I've been in the meetings where they have made it real clear. So, you know, I appreciate it. It'd be great if it was zero, but I also think Randy's right. This council's got to decide whether we're really against affordable housing so much that we're going to waste staff time, not to try and find a way to do it right, but to try and eliminate the number, even though we apparently still say we want to do it.
I, I think we're better off just having really good gray water systems. And, and, you know, with the accessory dwelling units also means people doing home shares, which could, doesn't necessarily have to increase the amount of water. Well, anyway. I tend to agree with you, Ryan.
And there's, and there's always a first. So are we going to wait and bring this back? That's what we're doing right now? Yep, okay. All right, so we'll move on to council member reports. Anybody?
Too tired.
Okay, city manager report?
I think I will, I'll pass under the circumstances, except our next meeting will be, I believe, at 6:30 for our consent items, and it'll be at Libby Bowl again, so we'll see everybody in two weeks.
Any future agenda items?
We're bringing the housing element back. We'll probably be bringing back the BAV fire hardening at that meeting as well. And then I, we have a couple others that we're trying to schedule either for that meeting or the next, but those will be the two, two major ones.
Well, homes and fire, so that's good. Randy?
We're on future agenda, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like a budget update. I think we haven't had one in a while. It'd be nice to get some type of readout. And I just want to say I appreciate the conversation tonight regarding protocols, and I'm not going to let them go. If I feel the same way again, I'll do the same thing again. I'm just asking council to think about what we do and how we do it and how we can do it better.
Agreed. We can always get better. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you all.
All right, real quick, Mayor.
Yeah.
When we bring back the BAV, would it be appropriate to wrap in maybe the updated draft? We provided feedback on the disaster plan, and I don't, I don't know if we've seen an update, updated draft or not. Or maybe I'm, I'm not thinking clearly because it's too late at night. Would it be appropriate to wrap that into that agenda item as well?
We can, I don't know. So I thought that council ended up, you're, you're right, it's late. But I think, I think council approved the resiliency framework with that 14th item added, which was.
Yeah, with a couple little changes.
Yeah, but I think it was approved, so I believe that's been approved.
So it's not an issue of any discussion, any further discussion right now. Okay.
Well, we wanted to back as a funding plan, or, you know, identify which were, were required funding and then potential options, so that is.
Okay, so Mayor, I apologize for bringing it up. We need to focus on the BAV recs.
And Patrick Maynard, I talked to him, and he's going to come at the end of October to talk about, you know, his relationship with us and how we're going to coordinate. So that, that'll be great. All right, well, thank you all. Have a good night's sleep, and this meeting's adjourned.